Good afternoon, and we're calling our budget work session to order. And Commissioner Washington will be joining us shortly. But for sake of time, we're gonna go ahead and get started. And I will call up the CFO.
Thank you. Good afternoon Chairman Nesbit and Commissioner Williams.
Good afternoon.
As you all know, I serve the Board of Commissioners as the Chief Financial Officer for Rockdale County. I want to welcome everyone to the Rockdale County 2025 Budget Work Sessions. You have been provided with a copy of the Rockdale County 2025 Budget Report Binder. Inside, you will find year-over-year budgets, including the requested 2025 amount, 2025 presentation, and the five-year capital improvement plan. This year, we had planned to have two fiscal year 2025 budget work sessions, beginning today and ending at the conclusion of the departments, and then we'll reconvene again tomorrow at 10:00 a.m. During these sessions, you will hear from the various Rockdale County Departments, elected officials, and constitutional officers as they present their 2025 operating budget and five-year capital improvement plan requests. The planning and preparation for these budgets began in June 2024, and the departments actively participated in budget training, meetings, and consultations facilitated by Finance Talent Management, just to name a few departments. Today, the budget work session presentations will begin with the Rockdale County Sheriff's Office, followed by the probate court, while of a short break, move into Rockdale County Fire Rescue, and the public defender. We appreciate your attention to the presentations over the next couple of days. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So first up is the Sheriff's Office. Sheriff Levitt, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Dr. Williams. Our presentation, as you all know, always start off with me. And to get my staff involved, various members of my office will be presenting, which would consist of the two majors. And for the Sheriff's Office, Sheriff's Office Administration, which is the division that reports under me, will be presented by Kari Oden. So I'm just gonna go over, touch a little bit on our vision and mission, and some goals, and vision, mission, and some values, some goals and objectives, incentives, initiatives, I'm sorry, and some of our successes, opportunities, and challenges. And I'm gonna go through this kind of fad, so for the sake of time, so that the commanders can have enough time to present their budget, and that you all will be able to ask them questions. During that time, as they're presenting their budget, of course, I will interject if I need to interject some additional information, if need be. All right, so starting off on the first page, with our vision and mission, as most of you know, our most agencies, all agencies actually, to include county, the county as well, have a vision and mission. In part, the vision of the Rockdale County Sheriff's Office is to continue to be a leader in law enforcement. The vision will continue to focus on four pillars, which are six basic principles of accountability, administrative efficiency, communication internally and external communication. The mission, which is very important, is to reduce crime, safely house inmates, bring offenders to justice, and perform the mandated service to the Office of Sheriff with the highest level of safety, professionalism, and integrity. Our strategic goals, if you remember, I talked about a couple of these during the campaign, but of course, always is crime reduction. That is one of the, number one, that's always been my top priority, as well as keeping our courthouse safe and safe housing our inmates. Our next strategic goal is our technology and equipment. And we talked about that, improving our technology and equipment within the Sheriff's Office for efficiency. Professionalism, development, hiring, and retention. You'll hear a little bit more about that as we present. Next page. Some of our successes, the civil unit. If most of you know, we get a ton, and in fact, not just Rockdale Sheriff's Office, but all Sheriff's Offices, with how the society has been, the way that, you know, people's been losing their houses and so forth. You can imagine the increase of papers that we've received. So the civil unit experienced the highest efficiency level for processing papers over this year than in the last five years with no backlog and intake. The employee roster for civil warrants and civil and records ended the year with only two vacancies in that division. We're continuing to deploy 20 of our flock cameras that we received, which will tremendously help and continue to reduce crime and solve our crime. Our solvability will be a lot faster, a lot more efficient, especially when it comes to time. The creation and implementation of the Ambassador's Program, which is a program we created some time ago. That program, I think, is a successful program. As a matter of fact, we have seen several of the counties have such programs. They're like, I know DeKalb County has one called the Community something. And of course, I modeled, tried to model the one that started some years ago from the Marietta Police Department. Ongoing success on the Alzheimer's Mental Health Clinician, which we want to try to increase our mental health clinician to two to three. As big as our county is, and as much as we've grown, as we know, Conyers has two. Of course, we're a lot bigger than Conyers, have a whole lot more population within Conyers, so two is really not enough. If we can have three, that would be great at some point. Transition, eight service weapons from traditional sites to red dots, which are red dots, which, you know, in a sense is red dot lasers, in case anybody wanted to know. Increase less lethal options for deputies by holding less lethal classes for shotgun use. Increase the number of four-wheel drive vehicles in our fleet. If you guys remember, we talked about, actually, that's on the net site, where it says purchase and outfitted five new vehicles for the Sheriff's Office. Those five new vehicles, if you guys remember, we talked about, I wanted to put a certain group, which are our sergeants, in trucks. One of the purposes of putting them in trucks is we wanted to outfit those trucks with the necessary resources when it's inclement weather conditions and issues, and/or just when we have situations where the road has to be closed. They have cones and barricades and other resources on the back of that vehicle to get them back in service in time. We completed the outfitting of 14 vehicles purchased in 2023. Some of the opportunities with newly filled positions allow for a reevaluation of a standard operating procedure and projected needs for the division. Potential new databases and operating systems are being considered to keep the Sheriff's Office current. One of the things I'm hoping to do in this next four years, hopefully the first year, is that we can do an infrastructure audit within the Sheriff's Office so we can get our databases all integrated into one, so to speak, and working together. Some other opportunities is continued technological advancements for 21st century policing, growth and specialization within the Uniform Patrol Division, updated and added equipment, as we talked about that one, the five new vehicles, and provide opportunities for personnel to attend advanced or specialized training. You know, one of the things that's unique about advanced and specialized training that I took under extreme consideration some years ago is when we're paying for, and this has been a good story to the taxpayers' funding, when we're paying for certain types of certain training, we put our employees under a contract. And if they leave us within a certain year, amount of years, they have to pay for that, pay that money back. Oftentimes, you'll find in different agencies where people are receiving that specialized training, and they're leaving and going to teaching at schools and/or going, using it for other agencies. Well, we caught on to that some years, several years ago, in my first term, as a matter of fact, and we put a contract after vetting it with the county attorney, and he assisted us in creating that contract. Some challenges we've had is under this, this part one is higher, a higher efficiency level of the civil process caused an increase in the number of available papers to be served. We talked about that a little bit in my earlier spiel. Within a limited number of staff, well, you can imagine, that's a small division. When you have a limited number of staff in there with the number of papers that they have to serve, not only civil papers but warrants. Not only that they serve civil papers, but they have to do evictions and setouts and so forth. And so that's a very busy division, and you don't have enough personnel, no matter if you're full in that division or not. The number of new employees in the division caused a decrease in employee morale due to training errors and personality conflicts. Competitive salaries compared with other metro, other area agencies, that's always a challenge. Staffing issues and the retention of experienced personnel, appropriate funding and preparation of MCV and maintenance areas for ACA accreditation, which is a challenge. We're working on that so that we can get our accreditation under ACA. All right, the next page. So we've improved our deputies' feasibility where they are receiving access to our judges by installing the e-warrants in all of the patrol cars. Prior to that, they had to come to the station. And there was a computer setup in the road call with a camera, where when the judge come on, they talk about the case, swear to the case, and the judge will then issue a warrant. Now, they don't have to come off the road, and they can do that from their cars. They can just pull over into a parking lot or pull over somewhere when the judge come on, and they can now get their warrant signed a little bit more efficiently. RCS is currently under budget in several areas in comparison to previous years, which is really good. We ordered several less lethal devices to better assist RCSO with de-escalation efforts. We're gonna continue to improve in that area. As you all may or may not have heard, we had a situation just last week. And as we had that situation, Clayton County came down, and we were talking about a resource that he was offered for us to use. And that's one of the things that I'm gonna look at. And so instead of always borrowing, if you will, we want to get our own resources because we want to end that situation kind of quick and not wait for that resource to arrive in our county. But it's always good to have those partners and have those available resources so that we can end that situation. Organization structure changes within the Law Enforcement Bureau allowing better functionality. Morale improved within several divisions within the agency. The Criminal Investigation Division has successfully lowered the clearance rate for RCSO. In addition, arrested over 30 people in one month despite staffing, staff shortages. Support service completed the front lobby. Hopefully, you all get an opportunity. When you come through our front lobby, you'll see the nice renovated lobby. Some opportunities we have is the initial budget evaluation allowed for better tracking of the budget thanks to our current finance executor. She has put some things in place, and let me tell you, she's a stickler. I hate to say this in public, but they have this name that they call our chief is chief. And, but I think that, I think that his, I think our finance executor has him beat on that. But that's a good thing, chief, so. RCSO can prove an advanced leadership institute to all commanding officer. We actually are working on an advanced institute, Leadership Advanced Institute, sort of modeling the one that Atlanta PD has so that when we get new supervisors and all our new supervisors and/or potential ones that may be on the list to be promoted, they can go through this institute. And I think I just asked, they just asked me for a distinction. The deadline was about a week or two ago. And so now that deadline is Friday. And so once we review that PowerPoint and that training, we will put every single one of our lieutenant sergeants and corporals, and I think the captains are gonna go through it as well, through this Leadership Institute training. Community engagement, let's see, where am I? All right, I'm on a, I lost where I was at. Among our opportunities?
New uniforms.
Oh, so we are looking at potentially some opportunities. We're looking at a new uniform, a more efficient uniform. I'm a stickler on that because I don't like changes. I'm kind of old school. So, but, you know, we're looking at the ones that they're presenting, and we'll make a decision from there. Opportunities for community engagement, advance specialized training. Opportunities for more advanced training, the opportunity to secure two additional apprehension canines, which we have received those canines, which was donated by Framos. Framos Business, and those canines are actually getting ready to be deployed soon, which will help with apprehension and continue our efforts in reducing crime and keeping our counties safe. Some challenges always is funding. Funding for training, funding for equipment, funding for vehicles, funding for all these different programs and everything else that we need. Lack of competitive salaries is always a challenge. Lack of retention is always a challenge, not just here, but not just in law enforcement, but in any state government, federal, and so forth. A lack of transparency sometimes, especially about financial standards. We have had some challenges where there's been miscommunications between us and the county, and we have continued, thanks to Michelle, we have continued to build positive relationships. We've always had a positive relationships with her, and not only with her, but basically with all the directors that's been in that position. And so we're always improving. She has been very good in meeting with our staff, keeping those ongoing meetings so that we can better improve transparency, not just, not that there's problems, but it just helps us stay on track and improve. Limited SPOSS fundings available. Partial of that reason is because we are using SPOSS funding for cars, where we should be allocating those funds towards our infrastructure, if you will. Inadequate outdated equipment, that's always a challenge there, especially in our jail with our cameras. We not having a real-time crime database center. I actually have on our list, me and at least, I think the chief is gonna probably attend, but at least one of our majors, if not both, will be working on a real-time crime database for Rockdale County where we can track our crime even better. All right, next page, some goals. Enhance and develop inclusive, sustainable, and coherent relationships with the community which ensure residents and have transparent understanding and access to the Sheriff's Office and its services, which is one of the reasons why we have open house once a year. Enhance RCSO Sheriff's application. That's our Sheriff's App that you can download on your iPhone or your Apple phone. That keeps you informed as to what we are doing. It also allows you to send messages to us. It allows you to send any kind of tips to us if you, allows you to send complaints to us through that app. Equity goals, ensure fair treatment and representation of all community members and build community trust in law enforcement. I often tell people, I'm not a politician, I'm a public servant. I think, and I say this a lot, sometimes I think not being a politician get me in trouble because I don't tend to do what politicians do. I'm more about the community and building positive relationships with the community. I serve everyone despite party affiliation. Develop programs such as the Sheriff's Activities Elite, which is SAAL, to teach and mentor our local youth and cultivate positive community relationship. Innovative goals, leverage technology by using intelligence and data and innovative ways. Enhance collaboration with other law enforcement agencies to improve efficiency and transparency. Foster a culture of continuous improvement and adaptation to new challenges. As we continue, community outreach programs, which, there's a lot of the program that you've seen the Sheriff's Office advertise that we've had throughout our committee. I'm not gonna read all that. We talked about the mobile app, which is that Sheriff's App. We hope that you all download that app and stay in touch with things that we have going on. Innovative initiatives, our mental health unit, which is what we're working on, which is a mental health stabilization unit. And let me be clear, because this seems to come up every now and again where there is a difference in our mental health stabilization unit and the stepping up initiative. So I want to be crystal clear on this mental health stabilization unit. What people don't understand that the jail has inmates that are already incarcerated that are experiencing, that has experienced, and that's been diagnosed with mental health challenges. The problem is, we can't get them in the facilities that they need, and they're taking up bed space. We have a young man in our jail right now that's on a four-year-old level, and all he does is sit and play with Legos. And he needs to be in a facility. This is someone that the taxpayers are paying money for day after day. This is someone that could end up, you know, something tragically happening on our watch because he should not be in jail. We have over 300 other inmates. Just imagine a jail with 1,000 or 2,000 inmates, and you have individuals in that jail. And so what we created is a mental health stabilization unit that is almost complete so that we can move those individuals from the regular population into that mental health stabilization unit that will be receiving mental health services from the professionals and so that we can fastly get them out of our jail. The last thing that we want is for them not to receive those services and something happens to them in our custody, where they're under the watch of those professionals, and they have a better survival rate, and that they're stable while in our custody, until the state and/or the federal government decides that they want to open up our facilities back again, that we can get these folks in these facilities where they belong. And then not to mention, we don't want to release them back in the society, and they don't have the proper resources. So we started a new wander alert. We have had a ton of individuals go missing. Unfortunately, we had one gentleman that went missing, and he was found deceased. After that, we decided we wanted to do something to offer to those that are suffering dementia, Alzheimer's, and any other mental health challenges that causes them to wander off. So we have a GPS device that we're offering. The first 40 people that sign up is free. Thereafter that, there's a small cost, I think it's like $10, $10. And that cost would go straight towards the maintenance of the GPS units, such as batteries and so forth. The Sheriff's Office does not make any money off of that fee. Equity initiatives, which is the assessment, conducted infrastructure assessment. We talked about that, you know, you all know about that. Diversity engagement, develop partnership with local youth schools, colleges, and organizations to create better relationship between the community, youth, and law enforcement. All right, is that the next one? Is that one for me? Is that me or you? Okay. All right, so I'm going to turn this over to now to Kari Oden. Thank you all for your time.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
As it states, based off the Rockdale County Sheriff's Office Fiscal 2024 Budget, we are currently at $29.2 million. As we move forward to our 2025 operating and personnel budget, we are looking to request $36.6 million as our overall budget. That is based off ensuring that we have all of our personnel positions. Previously, we have not been allocated all of the funding to hold all 328 positions that we are accounted for as the Sheriff's Office. And as we go through, we'll kind of explain other areas to you guys. We can go to the next slide. So as the sheriff stated, the Law Enforcement Administration Division pretty much is what I call your bread and butter of the entire agency. You have your executive command team, where you have the sheriff, the chief deputy. You also have your HR department, you have your finance. You also have your OPS, which deals with all of our internal affairs, things within our agency, as well as our background in recruiting, which deals with our hiring process. And when you look at these different functionalities within Law Enforcement Administration, it is essential that we have the funding that we need to operate at such a large capacity. One of the things I want to bring to you all's attention when we talk about the Law Enforcement Administration Division is we are essential for maintaining the integrity, efficiency, and effectiveness of the Sheriff's Office, enabling our agency to fulfill our mission of public safety and community service. Some of the core components that the Law Enforcement Administration are responsible for are operational support, policy development, communication and coordination, training and development, compliance and accountability, which is huge as for the Sheriff's Office, as well as public relations, strategic planning, and resource management. And if you're not a part of the Sheriff's Office, you wouldn't necessarily know that. So it is important that we bring that to your attention as we request additional funding for our agency. So within Law Enforcement Administration, we are requesting $123,000 increase. That is over a variety of different line items. Increase in overtime funding for our Law Enforcement Administration, who is responsible for a lot of support that they give throughout the agency, as well as other community events here within Rockdale County. As well as our personnel services. That is one of our key areas where we are looking to increase by $54,000. Why, you ask? Because we need a cleaning service. Rockdale County Sheriff's Office has done an amazing job with trying to utilize the services that we have in-house, such as our trustees, which are inmates. However, in order to come out from the jail, there are certain requirements that you have to meet in order to step onto the grounds such as our headquarters office. And with the headquarters building, you all have had the opportunity to visit. It's a very large building. That in itself, it is hard to maintain the cleanliness of that building with one inmate trustee to ensure that we have cleaning services every day. Not only our headquarters building, but we also have a south side precinct, which means a lot of our Uniform Patrol deputies and supervisory staff. We need cleaning. No professional should be cleaning toilets. No professionals that work within the agency should be mopping floors. It is important that we receive the funding that we need to ensure that we can hire a professional adequate cleaning service to ensure that our cleanliness is maintained, which we do a good job at doing, but this helps to offset the burden of what the Sheriff's Office is doing internally to make sure. of what the sheriff's office is doing internally to make sure that we uh have those services within-house. Also repair and maintenance, we're requesting ten thousand dollars. Repair and maintenance includes the maintenance of vehicles. Within that particular division, you do have over twenty-one personnel that fall under this division. And with that, we need oil changes, tires need to be changed, there could be an accident, and all of these things are imperative when you look at the things that we are responsible for maintaining within our agency such as our vehicles. When you look at our travel, mandated training is ongoing, not just in law enforcement, but in the, any professional industry. And anyone sitting here today understands inflation is real. When you go on a trip for personal reasons, hotels are high, flights are expensive, gas is going up. And so if we have to continue to receive continued training, advanced mandated training, it takes the proper funding to support all of the personnel that we have. So everything that we're requesting today are needs, not wants. Educational training, also, we are asking for an increase of five thousand dollars. That includes paying for registrations. When you go to these conferences, they're not cheap. They're five hundred dollar registration, three hundred and twenty-five dollar registration. It costs to attend the trainings. And so in order to make sure that we have what we need to maintain the updated training so that we can protect the service community, we are requesting the adequate funding. Also general supplies. For general supplies, the Law Enforcement Division supports several different entities when it comes to your copier, paper, pens, paper, everything that you need to operate. Those binders, it all costs money. And so in order to ensure that we continue to maintain the office supplies and things that we need, we are asking also for additional funding within that area. Gas, as you see, we also are requesting additional funding, just simply based off inflation. Gas is always fluctuating and we wanna make sure that we are maintaining a balanced fiscal budget. So we wanna make sure that as we move with the times, we're moving with, making sure that we have the funding that we need to move with those times. Small equipment, we're also requesting a small increase. This covers things like if you need a new desk, if you need a new chair, if you need a printer. These things fall under small equipment. And as you all know, the sheriff's office has been around a long time and we have a lot of outdated stuff. And so we wanna move with the times and get updated stuff too. So again, we're requesting funding in this particular area. Um, other supplies is also another area that we are requesting some additional funding as well. The last area that I have to cover uh at this moment will be our sheriff's office and buildings. Sheriff's offices and buildings, for those that do not know, pretty much is also the backbone to the sheriff's office, if we can get to that slide. Yes. And you just go for one more. We're only requesting in one particular line item, ten thousand dollars for rate, maintenance, repair and maintenance. With this particular area, I want everyone to understand, in order to operate all of the facilities within the sheriff's office, it takes money. If the elevator goes down, we have to maintain compliance, that is a fee. We have to pay for that out of this particular uh line item or function. If something happens at the south side precinct, whether the door is messed up or we need to change the carpet, or we need to have uh new security surveillance put in, these particular funds that support our other buildings come out of this fund. So by the time you get through a whole budget cycle, a total of eighty thousand dollars can be ate up real fast, especially when you're looking at if our other respective divisions run out of money, thirty-three fifty-five is the support to uh to those other entities within the sheriff's office. And so we are requesting an additional ten thousand dollars for this area. Now, as we go into our another, our other areas, I'm gonna call up Major Tate and he will go over his respective bureau.
We're actually gonna tag team this. So I'll start off with um, yeah, my name is Major Tate with the Rockdale County Sheriff's Office. I oversee the Law Enforcement Bureau, which entails uh the Uniform Patrol Division, Criminal Investigation Division, and Support Services Division. So we will be starting at the Uniform Patrol. So that's the, that's the next slide. Alright. Go one more. Alright, so repair and maintenance under Uniform Patrol. I'm actually going to just present primarily numbers, right? So it's one thing to sit up here and say, hey, we need this for this reason, but it's a different thing to give you numbers that shows why it is that we need what we need, alright? So for the month of July, we spent thirty-three thousand dollars, nine hundred eighty-five dollars and nineteen cents on uh maintenance and repairs just for vehicles, right? Um, within Uniform Patrol. If you equate that to an annual cost, that's four hundred and seven thousand dollars, eight hundred twenty-two and uh dollars and twenty-two, uh twenty-eight cents. So that line item currently, as you can see, it has um, it had, we're requesting, no, I'm sorry, uh it has, this, this fiscal year has seven hundred thirty-nine thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars. So we're actually asking to remove five hundred and thirty-nine thousand, five hundred and sixty from that line item to move it to another area, which I will speak about later. Um, but then leaving two hundred thousand and adding additional um one hundred thousand. So leaving three hundred thousand dollars in that line item and removing a total of five hundred and thirty-nine thousand, five hun- five hundred thirty-nine thousand uh and five hundred and sixty. So the reason why we're doing that is because ultimately, what we have right now is our Axon contract comes out of this line item. Well, that doesn't really make sense if you think about it. Axon is our body cams, Axon is our tasers, um our fleet, uh in, in-car fleet. So why is it coming out of our repair maintenance, right? So we would like to move that five hundred thirty-nine thousand dollars to another line item with falling under su- support services. Um, as you can see, I said it was a four hundred and uh, four hundred and seven thousand dollar um, you know, repair and maintenance as it pertains to um just the repairs um within Uniform Patrol. As you can see, we're gonna be going over, alright, we will go over. We understand that, if we only requested three hundred thousand dollars and we're telling you that it is thirty-three thousand dollars a, a month, we're gonna go over that. Um, so I'm just letting you know, you know, keep that in mind. Um, for education and training, so right now we have eighty-six sworn personnel within the uh, the law enforcement, um, well, the Uniform Patrol area. That's actually not to include the fourteen parts of our positions. Um, and we have eight thousand dollars that we received for this line item. That equates to ninety-three dollars and two cents per deputy. Is that enough to provide adequate training to the personnel that is assigned under Uniform Patrol who are encountering your everyday citizens, alright? So um, we don't believe that that is enough. Uh, we don't believe that we can truly give the deputies the training that they need to be um efficient in their jobs with ninety-three dollars um per deputy. So we're requesting additional nine thousand two hundred dollars, which will bring that total up to seventeen thousand two hundred, and that'll be a hundred and seventy-two dollar um uh amount per deputy. Not to say that that's, you know, is exactly what we need, but we also understand that we are, you know, we're requesting a, a lot of other areas. So um, a hundred and seventy-two dollars per deputy is what we're requesting for that area of education and training.
Major, what would be the dollar amount, if you had a perfect scenario, to have that daily amount per deputy? What would that number, are you being modest, you said, because of the other requests? But if you really wanted to say what that actual number would be, what would it be?
I mean adequate training, I would say for each deputy, I would say that would equate to about fifteen hundred dollars per deputy.
Okay, thank you.
Um. Utilities, gas and diesel. So as we all know that there is an influx within gas prices, uh we spoke about that, but again, I'm gonna give you numbers. For the month of July, Uniform Patrol spent thirty-one thousand dollars, nine hundred eighty-three um and thirty-six cents. That is equating to three hundred eighty-three thousand, eight hundred and thirty-two cents, alright? So we're talking about our annual cost, that's, we are currently operating with three hundred and fifty-three uh thousand, one hundred and twenty-six dollars. We are requesting three hundred seventy-three thousand, one hundred and twenty-six dollars, which is a twenty thousand dollar increase. For small equipment, this line item, uh.
And Major, PR is asking that you s- uh speak, is they, they, they are streaming it and folks are listening and they, folks are complaining that they can't hear and all the streaming stuff. So if you would, you know, just for all those folks that's not here who's watching, they wanna be able to hear you.
I got you.
Thank you.
Alright, so our small equipment line item that's uh, that falls under Uniform Patrol, um, this is our equipment, alright? So we, if we wanna talk about, again, numbers, radars, radars cost twenty-four hundred dollars. Lasers are twenty-five hundred dollars. Um, this is our speed detection, one of our number one complaints in the county is speeding. So we have to have the equipment available and readily, readily available to us to where we can actually um, you know, combat those complaints. So we are requesting an additional sixteen thousand, um sixteen thousand, nine hundred ninety-two dollars into that line item, um, which will bring our total up to forty-five thousand dollars.
And if you had that dollar amount, how many radar detectors you, you'll, you'll have then?
So if we were to increase where we are currently, so I'll, I'll tell you, when the sheriff first came, took office, he purchased twenty additional radars. Um, again, we know we have eighty-six sworn personnel within the uh Uniform Patrol area. So we need, we need to make up that difference within that. Um, we do have some, some are going down, um, some have been wrecked, you know, damaged in vehi- uh in vehicles as they wreck. Um, so I don't have the exact number as to how many ra- uh radars and lasers we have in front of us, but I do know that we are off um within our numbers. So we're asking for some uh, uh, some additional funding to get those numbers up to where they need to be.
Okay.
Um, other supplies. This is our uniform cost. These, trust me, this lo- this area here, it changes all the time. But I do have numbers for that, our pants, these pants that I have on current, they are a hundred dollars. Alright, we have our shirts, our Class A shirts that are eighty dollars. We have our outer vest and our inner vest that totals at, at eight hundred dollars, that's nine hundred and eighty dollars per deputy. Alright, so we are needing adequate funding within that area to be able to support every time we hire a new deputy, when deputies are out there, they are out on the road, they're in the jail. Um, whatever it may be, they are, you know, having to go physical with people, uniforms are ripping, uh wear and tear every day. So those things um, you know, equate to us needing new uniforms. So we have to be able to support our personnel as it pertains to uniforms. Um, you can skip, I believe it's two pages, 'cause I kinda did the justifications already for those. Um. Second, support services, yeah. Alright, you can go over one. Alright, so professional services. So I did speak earlier in regards to the five hundred thirty-nine thousand dollars that we wanted to remove from the um repair and maintenance line item under Uniform Patrol and to put into support services. This is for our, again, our Axon contract. Um, our Axon contract includes the body cams, the tasers, and the uh Fleet Threes, which is our in-car cameras. So we would like to request one million, one hundred thirty-eight thousand do- uh, one hundred thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred forty-five dollars and seventy-four cents um to be put into a professional services line item that falls under Support Services Division. The reason why we are requesting this a lot amount of funding is because we want to remove all of our contracts that we have labeled and placed in other areas and move them all into Support Services. Support Services is the actual support for the sheriff's office. Um, our IT department falls under there. A lot of these things, especially to include our Axon contract, is technology, is technology. So we wanna make sure that all of those things are coming out of one line item to where we can properly track that. To be uh, to be added to that as well is the, the new drone. So we want to make sure that we are providing the, the safety that we need for the, for the community, right? So the new drone, yes, is a hundred thousand dollars for two, so it's fifty thousand dollars apiece. Um, and this is to provide us real-time crime-fighting abilities, alright? So there's, there's a lot of different agencies that are out there that actually has the ability to launch a drone and the drone will get to the site of the crime prior to the law enforcement deputy or officer. So what that is, that gives us a clear view to see what exactly is going on. If there's a person that is fleeing, we have the ability to see that, get that description and all that thing, all those things relate over to the deputy prior to them getting there. But there's another aspect that um, that this portion would actually do. If you ever think about it, we have uses of force, we have all these different things that goes on. Um, if we have the ability to have something in the, in the, in the air, right? That's seeing every move that the deputy is doing, because our body cams, they fall off, right? So at, at the end of the day, what that really boils down to is that if this deputy is hands-on when someone and the body cam falls out, we no longer have the footage. But what happens if we have a drone there that can actually have that overview to see what exactly is going on and that can actually be used for our use of force clearances as well, alright? Another area is our, is our uh tasers. We're asking for a hundred and sixty thousand dollars for tasers um to be added to our Axon contract. Uh, tech, um, the technical services.
You currently have tasers for all your deputies?
Yeah, so we currently have Taser Sevens. The Taser Sevens, um, they are actually going to be up on their um warranty next year. Um, so if you think about it, if you talk about anything that has a warranty, what happens after the warranty is done? Alright, um, however, it's no, it's not supported even on the platform of Axon. So if it, after that warranty and it's no longer supported, if something happens with that, we have to carry that liability because it's no longer supported under that warranty. So we wanna make sure that we are staying up to date within the, the times and with the equipment um to make sure that we have what we need. Um, the Taser Ten, we've had them come out and do demos. Um, everyone who was involved actually was very pleased with what the Taser Ten does, but also just to say that, yes, our, our warranty is, is, is gonna expire next year. Um, for technical services, under Support Services, um, this is the area that, if you guys know, we have our South Side Precinct. We have right now that if the South Side Precinct goes down, if power goes out, we don't have a generator there, alright? We don't have a generator, which means that area currently is not, is not occupiable if we don't have what we need there to keep the power running. Um, if there is a, um, you know, our special operations personnel that is trying to work, they can't work if the power goes down and we don't have a generator to kick on. So we are requesting a hundred thousand dollars in this, in a line item for technical services um needed to, to get our um South Side Precinct up to date to reroute the H back to the, a room that we have there with our current server because it is not getting the uh, the air-conditioned flow that it needs currently um to keep that system cool. If you understand anything in regards to technology, you understand that it has to be kept cool, especially in server rooms. Um, and that we don't currently have that, so we are requesting a hundred thousand dollars to ensure that that room is adequately um, you know, I guess advanced to where it needs to be. Um, for small equipment, Support Services is the, the area in which supports the sheriff's office. If you're talking about the uniforms, you're talking about all these different things in which that we may potentially need, Support Services Division is, is the, the area that actually provides that. So we are asking um for an increase of twenty thousand dollars in that line item, taking it from fifty-six thousand, one, uh fifty-six thousand and twenty-one dollars to seventy-six thousand, twenty-one dollars. Um, this is to support us again with our small equipment line item. You can uh jump. To CID, we'll jump one more, uh, actually, one more. Alright, so our Criminal Investigation Division currently has ten assigned investigators. It's been operating with ten assigned investigators since how long?
Over twenty years.
The issue with that is, we are having increasing amount of calls. The amount of calls, the amount of call-outs in which the CID has to go out to, that has increased, but we have the same amount of investigators. So what do you think is being used at that time, overtime? The, the investigators that are assigned to that area have to go out more. We actually had the other night where um, I know the sergeant and the, and the crime scene um tech actually responded out three times in one night. So just imagine the amount that that, you know, the amount that that is ac- um actually coming up to when it pertains to overtime. So we're requesting additional twenty thousand dollars, we currently have a hundred thousand, we're requesting to go to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
And what would that do? You have ten uh investigators now.
Yes.
You get that additional twenty, how many more people will that give?
So it's not, it's not gonna be additional people, it's requesting additional funding for.
Explain that, it's not just whatever overtime, we, so we said.
It's emergency.
We get additional personnel, and also the, the pay that we have to pay, they're like, they're paying for overtime.
So yes, that i- it is time and a half, is emergency call-in when they are, when they're being called in. So what we're requesting on this change, um, is, it wasn't necessarily personnel within this, this was additional funding for overtime budget to, to, you know, take into consideration that we are requesting them to come in, emergency call-in, time and a half.
Right.
So um.
And you said you, Major, uh, you said you, you've had ten investig- And you said, you, Major, you said you've had ten investigators for how many years?
Over twenty years.
Twenty years. So how many, let's just talk about investigators for a minute. How many would you, to bring you up to P, up to par, for twenty years, you've only had ten? How many would, do you need to get into current?
Todd?
Yeah.
In my professional opinion, the caseload for investigators is enormous. I would cut them in half, therefore I would add an additional ten. They're running anywhere from eighty to seventy cases.
So, so you would need another ten?
Another ten.
Okay, alright, okay.
To regularly work a case, you need thirty to forty.
Just to give you an idea, Phil, here's the big share. When I was in CID, if you carried over thirty cases, that, you're, you're behind. And catching up is, and sometimes, um, you can almost talk right up. If you go over that thirty, over thirty cases.
So are you also, uh, I heard you say twenty thousand dollars, and you explained that.
Yes.
Are you also asking for some additional investigators to carry the workload and the caseload?
Personnel is, we're not at personnel yet.
It's another.
So, Mr. Chairman, I just wanna take just a minute that if anybody wants to speak, you really do need to speak into a microphone. We're streaming and people can't hear you.
Okay, so Sheriff, as I was saying, any, any support feedback? Because the folks are, they, they, they're on us about wanting to hear. Yep, okay, alright, very good, thank you.
Alright, so then we have our repair and maintenance line item within our Criminal Investigations Division. Our vehicles are getting old. If you consider, you know, the, the life cycle of a vehicle in a sense, right? After your five-year, six-year mark, you start to increase within your repair and your repairs within a vehicle, right? So we have vehicles that have high mileage that is within our Criminal Investigations Division. So we're requesting, um, additional funding to support, um, that area. But even when you, I mean, you do the breakdown. Um, CID averaged last month, the month of July, they averaged six hundred and eighty-two dollars and two cents for, um, for their repairs. That's not to include wrecked vehicles. So just taking account, you know, of the amount of, um, funding that is spent within the wrecked vehicles, within the, within a twenty-four hour operation, alright? So we are requesting, uh, five thousand nine hundred forty-four additional dollars to bring our total amount to forty-five thousand dollars. We are currently operating at thirty-nine thousand and fifty-six dollars. Um, our gas, again, as they are being called in, that is gas that is being used. Our inflation, the inflation on gas prices is up, so we want to make sure that we have what we need to, to be able to function properly. Um, however, I do have the numbers for that. For the month of July, um, the Criminal Investigations Division spent four thousand six hundred and twelve dollars on gas annually. That's fifty-five thousand dollars. And then again, with the influx within gas, within the amount of calls that they are responding to, we want that wiggle room to where we're not going over budget. Um, small equipment, CID needs laptops. So currently, how they are, um, working, there's five laptops that, that they need to actually complete that ten investigators to where they will all have laptops, to where they will have them in their vehicles, to where it's not requiring them to have to go back to headquarters to, to, you know, take out warrants. So right now, our Criminal Investigations Division, some of them have the laptops. So five have laptops, five do not. We want to allocate, or we want to make sure that the, the remaining has the laptops. That will also cut down on your overtime, um, because they are now not having to return back to headquarters, um, sit there, fill out the search warrant, the gas prices. All those things tie into why it is that we would, we would want to have those laptops there, um, for them to be at operate. Um, we currently have nine thousand three hundred and thirty-seven dollars in that area. We are asking for twenty-one thousand three hundred and thirty-seven dollars. That's a twelve thousand dollar change. And that is to support the, the laptops. Next up, we have Major Welch.
Hello, everyone. I'm Major Jason Welch. I'm over the Jail Bureau. To begin, uh, one more slide, please. I'm gonna be brief with the Jail Bureau and, uh, some of the things that were needed, but I will be back, just remember that. Um, currently for our Jail Bureau, our medical, uh, services contract has gone up with a CPI by four percent increase. So I, uh, along with the finance team at the Rockdale County Sheriff's Office, we began negotiations with our medical contract of NAF Care, um, sometime maybe two or three months ago. And then that time, NAF Care presented us with a proposal of a ten percent increase. Uh, through negotiations, uh, myself and the team that I was working with, we received, uh, that contract. We got that negotiation down to a four percent. So, uh, that's a six percent in savings that we have received for Rockdale County. Uh, that was a great endeavor for my team, uh, that we have here. Uh, with that, this is including some of future and, uh, more dental hours for our inmate population. We've increased that currently. A on-scene dentist and an assistant for that dentist is currently at six hours per week. We've increased that to ten, and that is all included within this new contract of that, of those savings. So we're gonna have ten hours a week for the dentist to come and, and review the inmate population.
So, Major.
And we just approved that today.
Yes.
And I was, I was gonna, I was gonna ask the major, uh, educate us, educate the general public. What is the requirement? You just talked about the dental, uh, what's the requirement for the county to provide dental hygiene or dental services for inmates?
A hundred percent. Uh, we have to provide a hundred percent dental coverage for anything that is, uh, pain-related. So naturally, we're not performing cosmetic procedures by any means whatsoever, but, um, once they have got a tooth that is, uh, inflamed, we have to, we are obligated to take care of those issues. Um, naturally, through our medical contract, we want to negotiate that cost down, um, and we have. And that's something that, uh, we take seriously here at the jail, is making sure that the inmates receive top-tier medical coverage. But we also want to make sure that we're getting exactly what we pay for with that coverage.
So do you, you don't do any preventative dental maintenance?
Yes, they do cleanings, they'll, they'll do preventative, um, as much as they can. Um, now again, some of that stuff will be voluntary though for, for the inmate. We cannot mandatorily make those kind of things happen, so.
Yeah, that would cost a lot.
But it wouldn't cost as much as a root canal.
Well, yeah, well, not, it wouldn't, but to do, if we, if we did a regular maintenance on inmates' teeth, that would really cost the county a whole lot of money. I think what I'm hearing from the major, people who have situations going on with their dental, uh, uh, then we are addressing it.
Correct.
Case by case.
Correct.
Right.
It is no different than a medical procedure. If someone comes in, um, and they have taken poor care of themselves throughout their life and they have, uh, high blood pressure or, uh, heart problems and they have an issue within our jail, it's mandated by us to get them the medical services required. It is no different for dental, um, whether they have a, a bad tooth that requires a root canal, we must take care of that as well.
Got it.
But that is, uh, we do, we will see a four percent increase on that. Our food services CPI, this is standard in the industry. As we've talked about gas many times in here, food is no different. Food has gone up and we've got that to a three point nine percent increase. Uh, moving to our small equipment, our small equipment, uh, we are going forward, and before I touch on this key control system, you see in parentheses, there's an ACA requirement next to that. ACA is an accreditation, uh, that we are attempting to achieve here at the Rockdale County Sheriff's Office. And with that accreditation comes accountability. And accountability set for, right now, with our key control system is, we want a digital platform for all of our keys. So should anything in the jail, a power outage, um, a control panel malfunctioning, we need to be able to get the inmates safely out in the event of a fire or any emergency or just to keep the base operations flowing in the day-to-day. So this key control system will allow us to have a digital platform. So if Deputy A is to check out a key, we constantly know where that key is in case Deputy B needs it on the other side of the jail. And this is what this key control system is.
Got it.
Um, and also you'll see that we added, uh, additional Motorola radios, and this is for deputies and medical staff. Currently, where we have it right now is the medical staff is not afforded a radio. So if there's a medical emergency in the back where the inmates are, a deputy has to inform the nurse, and then the nurse has the response time. We want to minimize that response time and have the nurses that are on-site have their own additional Motorola radio to include some of the deputies that are without one as well. And that's listed as also. And we can go to Judicial Services, please. For Judicial Services, we're going to include travel, education, and training. Now, those are two separate things, or three separate things, but I want to add them all together. And the reason why we're big on increasing this line item is simple. Uh, we do have the new judicial complex that is being built. Uh, as this is being constructed, we want to provide our staff that's going to be working in this facility the opportunity to get top-tier training to work in a facility of this magnitude. We want to be able to provide them the ability to go to other agencies that have one similar to this, such as that we have toured during this endeavor. I want them to go to those agencies, work with those deputies so they can see the ins and outs and the pros and cons of each, uh, section that they will be working in. And naturally, this is gonna be an increase in gas. This will also be an increase in some travel and an increase also with some of the training budgets. But I feel that this will be an adequate number for our staff, uh, for this particular line item. And again, that will conclude mine.
I want to note one thing that Major Tate brought up during his presentation for Support Services. With the one million dollars for Support Services, I want to make this clear. Our maintenance contracts and agreements that the Sheriff's Office have currently, we have over four million dollars worth of contractual maintenance agreements. However, we have not received the funding to support these particular maintenance contracts and agreements. So I want to make sure that you all are aware of that as you all review and assess, as well as the citizens watching, that out of that four million dollars are operating, we are at seven point three million dollars for just our operating budget. So when you take that four million dollars away that we currently have, it only leaves us with about three million dollars to truly operate our entire agency for our regular day-to-day operational needs. So I just want to make sure we're clear. So we're only moving five hundred and thirty-nine. The additional funding, out there going through the trends, assessing, that's saying, rob and Peter to pay Paul, that is what we have had to unfortunately do to make sure that we cover all of our agreements and our contracts. Just want to make sure you all are aware of that. As we get into personnel. Currently, the Sheriff's Office has authorized three hundred and twenty-eight positions. Uh, that assigned number is probably changed since the last time this was presented at two sixty-five, when this was submitted. Currently, we have twelve, what we call ARPA-funded positions, which were our mental health deputies. What's gonna change with this in twenty twenty-five? Now that the ARPA funding would no longer be available for us to pay our deputies that hold these positions, we now have to include that into our operational personnel expenses going into twenty twenty-five. And so if you can go to the next. So with that change, including our ARPA positions, we are looking at an estimated three hundred and thirty positions, and we may have to go back to the table with that just to correct those particular numbers. But as we go into what we need for personnel usage, the majors will come up and will talk about their respective areas again. But the two areas that I want to talk about as far as, um, finance and HR. The Sheriff's Office has the largest budget in Rockdale County Government currently. We have over three hundred personnel. We also have our own entities within house internally, which is your finance. We oversee our entire operations, maintain a twenty-nine point two million dollar budget that includes procurement and purchasing, that includes grant management, it includes purchasing cards, and making sure every function of finance is overseen in collaboration with our county finance department. Currently, it is myself and Deborah Shelton-Williams who is assisting me with maintaining the efficiency and effectiveness of being fiscally responsible in our funding. That is a lot on two people, and Deborah just actually came on board. So if you can go to the next slide, we are requesting an additional fiscal officer. This will allow us the opportunity to make sure that we are doing everything we can, not, number one, burning ourselves out, to oversee a twenty-nine point two million dollar budget, which will increase over thirty million dollars. Realistically, it is impossible. We're doers and we get it done, but it is a lot on two people to try to manage that type of budget and making sure that we do our best to maintain a balanced budget, which we have done a phenomenal job in doing, as the sheriff stated. We have decreased our deficit in the last two years because we are monitoring our finances. But again, it is hard and we need some help. And I hope help is on the way.
Let me ask, let me ask you this question.
Go ahead.
You've got a lot of money to deal with, with just two people.
Correct.
How many people, you, I, I hear you asking for one additional person. How many people do you really would need, would you really need to run that operation in the finance department?
To, to be honest, at least you would need, uh, on top of myself, three people because we have grants management. Not only we work, and thank you for that.
So slow, slow, I'm gonna make sure I'm tracking you the right way here. Currently, there's two of you guys, two ladies, right?
And as recently as over the last four months, made two.
Okay, so you have two right now?
Correct.
And you're asking for one more?
Correct.
And my question is, in a perfect world, how many altogether would, if you said, if I could have to really staff this place up the right way, how many would that be?
In a perfect world, we need at least four.
Okay, alright, thank you, alright.
So that would be one more addition to.
Correct, correct.
So instead of you asking for one, you would be asking for two people altogether, right?
Yes, in a perfect world, yes.
Okay, alright, very good, okay.
And, and again, for the people watching, you deal with grants management, you deal with purchasing and procurement, you're dealing with contracts, purchasing cards, you're dealing with everything, dealing with the money to operate the Rockdale County Sheriff's Office. That is a lot. Um, and we also have our HR, similar situation. That currently has a two-lady team who again, is a, their own department within the Sheriff's Office. They collaborate with your county talent management, but from onboarding to exiting, our human resources is responsible for everything from payroll to orientation. That is a lot for two ladies to do, and they also need additional help to hold a three hundred-plus-man team. Realistically, let's be honest, it's, we need help.
How many would you need on your HR team?
Our HR manager?
And come on up to the mic, because this is, this is good. I think this is good for people to hear too, and to understand that. In order for you to operate, you gotta operate efficiently and effectively.
Correct.
Good afternoon, sir, ma'am. Um, I'm Alita Bowman, I'm the HR manager for the Rockdale County Sheriff's Office. And currently, we have myself and an HR generalist. We are requesting one additional HR generalist. Based on the number of personnel we have at the Sheriff's Office, ideally, we would need two generalists and an HR manager because you base it on the number of employees you have that are servicing, that you are servicing. And right now, we have three hundred twenty-eight employees in the HR department, and we're becoming full of service. We're not there yet, we're still working with, we work with talent management a lot, but our PAs, they're full of service. And what I mean by full of service, we prepare and enter the personnel action. So once it leaves our shop, it goes to talent management, from talent management to finance, back to talent management, back to us for processing. So we're full of service.
So, so right now, it's you and one other person?
Yes, that is correct.
And you're requesting, in a perfect word, you say it'd be great if you had two additional people, is that right?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Also, we're doing full of service on our workers' comp, and a lot of things that, um, we were having just wanted to and just preparing the documents, we're, we're trying to become more full of service on that, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you so much.
And before the majors come back to do their particular areas, want to make one other thing clear so that people are aware. We have an alumni association with the Sheriff's Office where these are dedicated citizens of Rockdale County that come in to volunteer. They love what they do within their respective areas. For Rockdale County Sheriff's Office Finance area, we have three dedicated senior citizens that help Deborah and I with simply filing papers. If we didn't have that, that additional duty would be on us. They can't use computers, and a lot of things, technology-based are computers. So it's not a lot that they can do outside of the filing, but what they do give us. But what they do give us helps us a lot. So I want the board to know, as well as the citizens, for the last 30 years, we have had these dedicated ladies who are 75, 82, and 80, that come in twice a week, like they are working a part-time job dedicated to help us on a weekly basis to make sure that we are in compliance with our filing and retention records for the Rockdale County Sheriff's Office Finance team.
Let's give those ladies a round of applause.
So it is my hope, after they speak, help is on the way.
Quickly, for our personnel, you can stay on the remaining slide. For our personnel, we are requesting in the jail bureau four sergeants. These sergeants will be responsible for the supervision of the mental health stabilization unit that we are creating. That should be completed hopefully by January 1st that we go open. We do have the deputies that are currently assigned, and they are approved through ARPA. They were previously approved. However, the ARPA funds have ran out. So those deputies and their salaries would need to be added. But with those deputies comes the need for supervision. This will be a new unit. This will be a unit that is unlike anything that we've seen in the correctional platform. As Sheriff Levitt explained earlier, these are inmates with different needs. Needs that are not common amongst a normal jail setting. We need staff that are dedicated for these needs. We need supervisors to hold that staff to accountability terms. And this is going to be led through our mental health providers and NAF Care. And this unit is going to be state-of-the-art. And it's also going to be 100% what we require is med compliance. Meaning that these meds are distributed to the inmates that have these mental health disorders, because that's often what we see in our setting is that there's no med compliance. So once they get properly diagnosed by their mental health clinician and the doctor, then the staff can go through and ensure that all of these policies and practices are in place. You'll see a different type of setting for these individuals. One that creates a stabilization for them to re-enter the world and not have any repeat offenses. And that, again, will be for the two, for the mental health sergeants, the four, and for these previously approved ARPA funds. And lastly, for the jail bureau, we need an additional civil deputy. As spoken earlier, we have a, an increase in papers. Now, we have an excellent personnel that is in taking the papers. And they provide the papers into our system to let us know that they need to be out for civil service. These could be anywhere from car repossession to late credit card payments to evictions. Well, the deputies have to go out and personally serve these papers. Right now, we have a sergeant and two deputies that are administering that. We need an additional deputy to get this done in an adequate fashion. The, the amount of the population that we've seen increase, and also, not even just the population, I have been in this bureau since 2021. When COVID, after COVID, we saw a massive amount of civil processing paperwork go through. And there's still a backlog on that paperwork. And we are attempting to keep that up. Not a backlog on us, but it could be from the credit card companies. As we all know, that there is a stay of evictions for a long time during the COVID process. All of that has to catch up. And as it catches up, the deputies are still maintaining what comes in on an ordinary basis and this backlog. So we're requesting that one additional deputy to help with that.
All right, so I will go into the system analyst, civilian position. We are requesting an additional system analyst. So I want to tell you guys what this, what this actually is, right? So we spoke in regards to our support services division and our IT unit within that area. Currently, we have one manager assigned, and we have, we have a position, but it is not filled currently. So it's a two-man unit. And you are talking about 328 employees that they are overseeing for all IT issues. Now, yes, we do go over to the, to the county IT in order, you know, to get some of support. However, these day-to-day functions, even if you think about the jail, the jail is where they spend primarily all of their time. Because you have to make sure that every door in there is working. Every computer screen that needs to be up is up. Every system that requires for this door to open and this door to close, we have to make sure that it's constantly working. And the only way that we do that is to make sure that there is someone that is assigned in that area pretty much all the time, to make sure that it is, is flowing the way that it should be. So our manager currently, our IT manager, is the person who is in there majority of the day, which leaves our law enforcement side in a sense of fend for themselves, right? Because you have one person that is allocating their majority of their time to the, to the location where has a lot of our liability within the Sheriff's Office. So we were, we are requesting additional personnel for that to ensure that we can actually have the, the IT support that we need to, to run the agency properly. So you have two people currently for 328 employees for IT-related issues. Moving into our property and evidence. So I spoke earlier in regards to, in regards to our, in a sense, our crime scene, not crime scene, Criminal Investigations Division, in regards to how many people that they have and, and the job that they have to do. But you have to think about it on the other side, there's caseloads. Last month, the Criminal Investigations Division had a total of 692 cases. The 692 cases, with those cases come evidence. Majority of those cases, you're going to have evidence that the deputies logged. If the deputies respond out to this call and they take in evidence, that is, right now, two people that is allocated to handling that. With the population increase, with the amount of calls that we are receiving, we have to have the adequate staff in order to be able to properly store and track this, this evidence. That is important, and it actually plays a role in our accreditation as well. So we want to make sure that we have what we need, the personnel that we need, to ensure that that area is also staffed. We spoke briefly, Major Welch and myself, while we were standing back here, and we said, we probably shouldn't have took off something that we took off, and that was some additional personnel. You spoke in regards to Criminal Investigations, and I know Major Welch took off some personnel from the jail. Because we also understand that, yes, although it is a need, that we, we want to keep in, in, you know, in mind, the taxpayers' dollars as well. So we do need additional personnel that, that's not listed there. And it is a true need. But we also are trying to keep in mind, you know, how that impacts the county. And, and some of those positions, again, will be the Criminal Investigation Division and then additional detention deputies.
Well, I appreciate you saying that, Major, but the way I look at it is that if you don't get the people you need, it's going to impact the county negatively if you don't get the folk. Because you're burning your people out. You're occurring overtime costs, and it's, it's a burnout. So you, you, in order to service the county and the citizens and to respond to the growth, the number of calls and all of what you all are dealing with, you've got to have the tools and the resources that it takes. So I don't think you really have to defend yourself, because the citizens, public safety is always a top priority for everybody. They know that you got to have what you need to have. So I, I wouldn't, I don't think you need to defend yourself in that regard. We understand that the county has grown, the population has grown. Things have changed, technology has advanced. You need different types of tools and resources to combat the issues that you're dealing with. And I think the young lady, Ms. Oden, did a great job talking about the understaffed in the department with the number of folks they have to oversee their financial operation. You, you literally burning out two people. And it just, it's, it's common sense to me. It's not rocket science, but go ahead.
So can I just say something to you? I, I think, you know, when you said, oh, we shouldn't have left those off. You're right, you shouldn't have. Because even though we can't, maybe can't approve all of them, we know what you need. And then next year, you know, so you've got to kind of look long-term.
And it's good for the public to hear what you all have done today. I think you've done a fantastic job with educating the public. They don't really all always understand, why do you need this stuff? I think every one of the speakers that's come to this microphone have done an excellent job explaining and breaking it down as to why we need this. We don't just need it because we need it, we need it to service the county. To take care of the jail, to take care of the inmates, to take care of the citizens and the number of calls. I, I think you're doing a great job, and to the commissioner's point, it is about forward-thinking. Because we are tasked with all of the county departments. And of course, again, echoing what she said earlier, the Sheriff's Office takes over 65% of the budget to run the county government in terms of operations. But public safety is a big deal. And you got to have the personnel in order to do it. So I think whether you get every single thing you're asking for, I think it's important that the people know, even if you didn't get it all this year, the next year, that need is still existing, you still need it. So keep educating, absolutely.
And we can go over to our capital improvements.
All right, so automotive equipment. We have the request of $125,000 for an upgrade modified. And honestly, it's, it's really a purchase of a new van. We currently have a 1995 van that we are utilizing for our Criminal Investigations Division, for our narcotics unit within that area. Just imagine, this antique vehicle that we have rolling around the county. How, how do you believe that that is actually, you know, conducting surveillance, right? How, how are you adequately doing what you have to do utilizing a 1995 van in the up-and-coming, the great Rockdale County, right? So we are requesting funding for a new van and as well as for the equipment that needs to go inside to operate or to be able to conduct our surveillance within that area. In addition, we are requesting, the Criminal Investigation Division is requesting five additional vehicles to replace its high-mileage vehicles. As, again, I kind of spoke on that earlier in reference to the vehicles and the, in a sense, the life cycle of them, how the repair and maintenance area will go up with the longer that we keep the vehicles. And that is what we are seeing within that area as well. With Uniform Patrol, we are requesting additional 10 patrol vehicles. This is a request that we have every year to make sure that we have the amount of vehicles that we need to operate effectively. I will give this, this backstory. I just called the sheriff and the chief, just, and the, and the major, just last week. And I said, I think we're going to all have to put our heads together to figure out how we're going to have the amount of vehicles that we need within the short time of about two months. Because we, the Uniform Patrol is at a staffing level in which we hasn't, we haven't seen in a while. Our shifts are currently assigned 52, just of shifts, 52 personnel. And we currently have 51 assigned, right? So we have only one position left in Uniform Patrol. That's not to, ma'am? That's a great thing.
That's a great thing, yeah. That's just the first time I've heard that in eight years that we've had.
And that is for our shifts. And now Uniform Patrol actually is the incumbents of the shifts and then as well as our special operations area. At total, we have eight vacancies within that area. So just imagine, we didn't, if, if we didn't plan for where we are currently, we wouldn't even have enough vehicles now. But we're seeing what we have, and we're seeing, hey, the future is here. We're here, we're living in it. And we have to make sure that we have the vehicles that we need. So we put our heads together and we tried to figure out what we can do to make sure that we have the amount of vehicles that we need. It's great, we have the personnel. But now we need the equipment to make sure that we can operate effectively. And just as an example, we have Crown Vics. Crown Vics were actually discontinued in 2011. So we want to make sure that we're having what it is that we need. And they're, that they're actually working. Additional, we are, Support Services is actually requesting two F-150s. We all know in regards to the natural disaster that we had, that at that time, we realized that we need vehicles that are equipped with four-wheel drive, with the ability to actually have, you know, store space in the back to where we can carry the things that we, the supplies that we need to go out, to even assist EMA. We went out, we, we were cutting down trees, we were doing all those things during the natural disaster, the recent natural disaster. And we want to make sure that the, that the units out there have what they need to be able to assist in those areas. For the next one, the CAD, JMS, and RMS, that's the next slide. So this is, I guess we can kind of tag-team together on this, because this actually impacts both of us, sorry about that. We will tag-team the CAD, JMS, and RMS, because this does affect both of us. So the Rockdale County Sheriff's Office has been working in the capacity of a data entry for the courts for a long time. Which means, if a deputy on the road has an encounter with a, with a, with a citizen that they are going to be taken into custody, they have to run their name in our CAD system, in our Spillman CAD system. They have to do the report in our Talik Technology Odyssey system. And by the way, those two do not integrate, which means they are putting in this information two times. And then when the person gets to the jail, the jail deputy then has to go in and put in additional information in reference to it, because all of them do not integrate. So just imagine the time that we have that the deputies are taking on, ensuring that they have all the information that they need within the systems. We want, or we are, we're asking for a new software. In a sense, it's a new software, but it's already something that we have. Currently, the, the, the 911 center, they are operating off of Spillman. We are operating off of Spillman, which is a Motorola product. We are asking to go to Motorola that will actually help us overall with our integration across the board, to even include the courts system. So it's going to remove the data entry portion for us to operate, you know, to operate efficiently on our end, but it's also going to save the taxpayers' dollars. Why, right? Because right now, we're utilizing four different systems to do the job that one system can do. So we're asking for this $1.1 million to ensure that we actually have the system that will reduce the overtime of the deputy. Because if they're in there, they're doing their reports, they have to put these information, this information in there three times. That's time that is lost, right? There's time in the jail to where that deputy can't get up and go do a check on the inmates. Because they are putting this, this information into the system multiple times. So that is a request that we have for that area. And then if you have anything else you want to add on that.
And then Major, Major Tate, before you go to Major Welch, give me the number of, because you did that earlier, just a few moments ago, the number of vehicles you need. Because I heard what the sheriff explained about the trucks and what he really want, his vision to, to put the supervisors in those trucks. And then you talked about during the tornado, how that really would have been a plus to have those forwards around. What's the total number of the vehicles?
All right, give me one second. So we have Criminal Investigations, who actually has a total of 20, 25 personnel. So we would say we need 25 right now. We, we actually have a shortage there of vehicles. This is why we're requesting the five, so we have 20, so we would need five additional there. The Uniform.
I'm going to take it step by step, so you took five right now?
Yes, five there.
I'm waiting to let you give me the total.
I'm trying, I'm trying to get your number there. All right, so five there, and then Uniform Patrol, we don't have, yeah, we have the 10. So I would say that we need 20 vehicles. I would say 15 for Uniform Patrol. The five for CID. And then I would say that the remaining will be going to Support Services. I would say 20 vehicles to make sure that we have what we need. Now, again, that is Uniform Patrol right now. We know, we understand that we have vehicles, they are in vehicles. But we do need updated vehicles.
Right.
So, but we are saying to fully allocate to where all of our personnel has the vehicles that they need would be the 20.
So 20, 20 is what you need right now, okay.
Really quick, what he probably didn't remember is one of those vehicles replacement is a vehicle that has been out of service for two, three years due to a transmission? Is that right? The one that Allen Akins used to drive? And it's never been replaced.
Okay.
And so another couple of those vehicles, I believe, is what, when he mentioned, Support Services, they're driving, now they're high, high-mileage vehicles that's got to go out of service.
Plus that 1995 he mentioned too.
That's correct.
I, I heard him mention that 95, absolutely. Okay, so now, so 20 is your number, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. How much money do you have for splosh for vehicles?
So we are allocated 360.
Just, just for vehicles, though?
So we're allocated $360,000 for vehicles a year. That is not enough, if you consider the fact that.
Well, well, I want, well, let me slow it down, Major. How much do you have right now?
$80,000.
You have $80,000 in splosh?
Yes, that's correct.
Just for vehicles a day?
Just for vehicles.
Wow. For a police vehicle, that's probably only one vehicle.
Yes, sir.
So.
We just got those updated numbers last week.
Madam CFO. Does our numbers reflect the same thing in terms of? Does our numbers reflect the same thing in terms of splosh? Come, come on over to the mic.
They have purchased some vehicles this year through splosh, so yes, that is accurate.
Okay, so what is their budget remaining according to what you show in splosh uh for vehicles only, just vehicles? I'm only talking about vehicles?
Remaining amount is approximately eighty thousand. It's allocated of three hundred and sixty thousand annually, but because there's been some purchased already this year and it's and um charged to splosh, that's where the difference is.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Major.
And I do want to highlight in reference to that, vehicles currently, we purchased five um, five vehicles this year. That totaled two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars just for the vehicle. That is not to include outfitting.
Right.
So that eighty thousand dollars is gone. We can't, we can't use that for another vehicle. That's gone already. That's, that's applied to the outfitting.
Okay, I got it.
And just to uh add to the CAD, JMS, and RMS system that we would like to acquire, this would also consolidate many different contracts that we already have. And it would put them under one, which would be very beneficial for anyone involved with the contract process. Uh, but moving on to our scanning project, we're requesting a-
Before you go there, do you know about if that would be a savings once you consolidate that? Or do, and do you know how much the savings would be?
Um, as of yet, because we're still vetting the companies, it wouldn't be a saving yet. It would just put everything under one umbrella for right now. Now they're scattered to beyond our EOC, our Odyssey, and everything is moved in different platforms right now.
Can we get that?
But Major Tate did mention that it would save time, which is money.
I got the time.
But once we have selected the platform, we uh have, I, we have eyeballed a specific platform that we like and is what currently our dispatch is using. Um, so once we get the final, we have to go through that again to, just to check. We actually, we're briefed on this this morning. And we need to go through the contract to just pick a few things out, but it looks like it would be some savings once that's conducted.
I would like if we could get the total amount of the existing contract so we can see at least, let people know that even, that this is a better option altogether because not only is it, even if it's comparable or even a little bit more, the savings is, is worth it to me. I mean, the time savings and the, the consistency is worth it to me.
Absolutely. I couldn't agree more. Uh, moving to our twenty twenty-five scanning project, we are requesting a hundred thousand dollars. Um, we currently have a backlog of files and most of these files are old. We have to keep certain files for a long extended period of time. Um, for instance, if it is a homicide, we have to keep that forever. So what that does is if you have a homicide that was done in nineteen seventy, we have to maintain that file. Well, over the course of time, those files will build up um and they will continue to grow. Uh, we want to take these files and digitally scan them in. Now, this shouldn't be a costly endeavor. However, what we need to do, and this is a project that Rockdale County has already done previously in other areas, is we want to use- Correct. We want to take the same company that will provide a search feature. Now, that's, that is the key component with the scanning project. Because I need to know with this particular file, I may need to access it again. So I may need to access a name, an address, a date of birth. So I need to be able to put keyword searches into so I can draw this case back out. So it's not just stuck in the cloud. But it would take all of our physical files, scan them into the cloud so we can have more space and not have to keep these files forever. The physical evidence, obviously, we will keep, but we're talking just reports and things of that nature. Um, our open records portal, an additional ten thousand dollars. Open records requests come into the sheriff's office frequently every day. This is gonna provide a better response, a better tracking, and a security of the information that's going to be sent out. Um, and then as our last one, we have just our computer for obsolete computers within the jail. Uh, currently, if I'm not mistaken, our IT, our county IT will come and replace computers every five years. We're requesting here an additional sixty thousand dollars to replace the jail computers. Uh, we could not operate under the same constraints of a five-year program. I'm requesting also that it goes from five to three years because the jail is a twenty-four hour operation. We all have offices. We get off at various times over eight hours, but those jail computers stay on all day, twenty-four hours a day, running information, receiving information. And their wear and tear tends to be a lot faster than those of just an office setting. And we have uh-
All right, so the request in reference to the Panasonic laptops, so that will assist us with the um outfitting of our, our entire uniform patrol with the actual Panasonic. Actually, we have some GTACs out there. I'm not sure if you guys are aware where the GTAC computer is, but that was a um, I operated it when I first came within the sheriff's office. And let's just say right now, if there is an update that needs to be done within that, within that GTAC computer, it takes about three days. So just imagine, we actually do have that compared to some of the Panasonic's and some of the Dells that we have that can be done in about twenty minutes. Um, so that is something that we're looking to move to, to ensure that we actually have the computers out there on the road that is working properly to where they are able to run the information that they need, um getting the feedback that they need and um, you know, and just kind of moving forward with their day-to-day operation. All right, so we're requesting a hundred and forty-eight thousand, one hundred and four dollars.
Commissioners, give me a second, uh, Majors. Commissioners, I've got to excuse myself to go to another obligation at this point. Um, I'm gonna leave at this time, but I want to say thank you to the sheriff's office and Sheriff Levitt, to his team. I, I've got the book. I'm paying close attention. You all did a fan, y'all give the sheriff's office a round of applause. You've done a fantastic job presenting the information. And I really want to just say this as I exit out. The word that I really want to focus on, Commissioner Washington, Commissioner Williams, is education. You've done a fantastic job educating the general public about why you need what you need and the impact it's having on your day-to-day operations internally and externally with delivery of services with the citizens and the protection of our citizens. You're obligated to maintain a safe jail. You gotta have adequate personnel and tools and equipment. And you gotta have the right, you know, I'm, it's still etched in my head about that nineteen ninety-five vehicle that he described. And then a few other things. And I listened to the two ladies, the lady from HR, Ms. Oden from Finance, talking about the overwork that they're experiencing inside their offices in order to be able to run what they have to. So I've heard everything that you said. You're in good hands with Commissioner Washington and Commissioner Williams, and we'll see you in the days ahead. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. If we could go over to our building improvements and renovations and expansion slide. I think there's one more. Yes. Okay, so when I mentioned the jail bureau in the beginning, I said I would be back. This is that portion of the conversation here. The jail roof. The jail roof, we are requesting an eight hundred and sixty thousand dollar uh cost for this roof. Uh, it is currently in irreparable condition. Uh, this roof has been requested uh many times to be in repair. Uh, I know back in twenty nineteen, when I was the jail commander, I believe it was requested then as well. Uh, the jail roof, as we talked about dentistry earlier, it's a great analogy for this. The jail roof is just that. It's like a tooth. And the more it's decaying, the more expensive it's gonna get to repair. Commissioner Williams, as you mentioned, the root canal, this, this is what this, this roof needs now, uh, is a root canal. Uh, our roof, not only is it providing um a unstable platform for the jail and the inhabitants within it, staff and inmates, we also need to realize that this roof is also creating damages in other areas. Our ceiling tiles are also becoming damaged, and that is very costly. Or uh, anything that has a metal foundation with the water is, is uh creating rust. Our electronics and our camera systems that we've spent money on, all of these things need to be covered with a stable and secure roof. So from a jail perspective, I would be remiss to say that this is not the most important line item that I have on here, is this roof for eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
Go ahead, Sheriff. Let me reiterate what he's saying about this roof. I hope that, and I'm gonna say some stern words, it is not to insult anyone. But this roof is important. This roof is, uh, now has been asked for several years. And it's now in the hands of y'all. The responsibility of the county is to provide the adequate funding to repair our buildings. We don't want to end up like some of these other um agencies and counties. And let me give you an example as to what I'm talking about that. Major Welch probably wouldn't say, but I'm gonna say it. And I was trying to prevent from saying this. But because we've gone year after year, year after year, asking for this roof, I think it bears y'all to know this. We had an inmate sitting on the telephone and we have video of this. And while on the phone, the roof caves in. Right there in front of him. And it barely missed him. And if we don't get this roof repaired, this is what's gonna happen. And now it's gonna be in the hands of y'all because we've asked over and over and over and over for this roof repair. Now, it's a, it's a huge cost. And we don't want this cost to prevent us from receiving um other funding for other things that we need. But again, this is a jail that we do not want to neglect, and we do not want to neglect that. Now, he's gonna talk also about the generator. Um, we've asked, that is another item that we've asked year after year, after year, after year. And we have band-aided and band-aided and band-aided. In fact, um, the last, um, one of the last storms we had, the uh generator shut off. We had to call, and it wouldn't, and I mean, the lights in the jail went out, went out, went out. The generator would not work. We had to call um an emergency personnel in. I think we've done that like twice, two or three times. And that's costing the counter where we can just replace the generator. So I strongly encourage you, you guys, to pay closer attention to those two line items. Now, the one thing I don't want to do is put that video out and just to show it, you guys. But if I need to send it and show you all, we would do that. But please, ma'am, um, in absent serve, that um we play, we pay close attention to those two line items.
Thank you, Sheriff. And I just want to remind that each year, if you look back through our presentations, this has been an increase in cost. And if it is not fixed this year, you will probably see this eclipse a thou, a million dollars. We're already at eight hundred and sixty thousand. So I'd imagine with each year we go by, it's just gonna become more costly. Uh, but moving on to our HVAC systems, uh, we need two HVAC systems for the jail and one for our front reception area. And that'd be a total of four hundred thousand dollars. The jail, as I've mentioned many times in this presentation, is a twenty-four hour uh a day building. It never shuts down. It never sleeps. And with that, we need to maintain the air and, and hospitable living conditions for our inmates and for our staff. Uh, that's why it's crucial to have these two HVAC systems online. And that's uh, again, that's four hundred thousand. Uh, Sheriff Levitt mentioned our, our JONX generator. That's eighty-six thousand dollars. Uh, this generator, uh, as the sheriff explained earlier, it has gone down and it has not performed as we've needed it to. It is in need of repair um and to completely be re, refurbished and, and moved on. Uh, but right now, the last technician we had out, he had to call an additional technician because he said, this generator's so old, I don't even know how to work on it. I have to get an additional one who, who has the skill set to do it. Um, and we had to wait an additional hour for that, and that was during a, a power outage.
All right, so we have our standalone HVAC system for our evidence room. For anyone who has visited the sheriff's office, and you walk in through the front entrance and you go through the secured area, and you walk down the steps or walk up the steps, sometime on the elevator, you immediately smell the odor of marijuana. The reason on why that is, is because we have an evidence room that does not have proper ventilation. We have had personnel who has went down there, been in that area, and actually have, has gotten ill right after due to the odor of the marijuana. So this is something that we continuously have to deal with. This can cause medical issues. So we are requesting forty thousand dollars to um, to be able to purchase an HVAC system to where it's properly ventilated and dehumanified in that area.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question about the roof.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, is that included in, in the summary, um, in the thirty-six point six million? Is the, is the um, the roof, the thirty, the, the eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars, is it included in the thirty-six point six million?
No.
In the sum?
No, because what we just discussed were capital, was CIP.
Capital improvement?
The thirty-six million dollars is for our regular general fund budget. And again, what we mentioned earlier, what has occurred, the sheriff's office, I'm sorry. The sheriff's office has not received all of the funding to support our personnel positions. So this year, county finance department has done a good job with making sure that going into our fiscal twenty twenty-five, we have all of the funding to support the three hundred and twenty-five, uh, twenty-eight positions that we have.
Okay. Does the sheriff have, do you, have you all worked with finance to come up with a capital improvement plan for the sheriff's department? So that we can start the process of, so I don't, I don't understand why we haven't paid for a roof yet. That's, but so, but it seem, but we do have a capital improvement plan. So I would want to see like the priorities so that we can start, if you need five million dollars if, in improvements, and I'm just throwing that up there, then definitely the first, we could say, okay, in five years, yes, we'll fund five million dollars. Here's your first million, y'all do it. You all take that million and prioritize it. I would prefer to see something like that. But a, a decaying roof concerns me. So I would want to see how we, how we can get you, you know, that and, and, and what pot of money it needs to come from. But we need to see the priorities within the capital improve, your capital improvement plan. What do you all deem a priority and how we need to make those financial adjustments so that you can get what you, you need.
As you see, that is number one on our top priority, and it has been uh for many times. And I, and I will say, um, this is the most dialogue we've had about the roof. And it has been a top priority. Uh, we've never had these meetings uh because it's never been approved. We've never had the approval for the roof.
But do you all have a capital improvement plan?
So, uh, uh, we do.
Okay.
It, and in a sense, what you see up there, um, that five-year-
That is the capital improvement plan?
That is, that's a part of it.
A strategy that we can work with finance for a, a strategy on how to implement the, the cap, capital improvement. Because like you said, it is our, our, our job is to make sure that you all are funded. And, but we need the plan and the, the um, okay. And the strategy on how to get the money to you all so that we don't have a million-dollar roof situation and all of the, the things that come with a roof falling in on somebody.
So yes, and she just put it up there for you to see in the five-year CIP plan. It's uh, one, two, three, the fourth one. And you see where it says the roof and, and the generator. So uh, and even prior to Michelle, we've talked to um finance directors to see, are there any extra money? We think we've even asked for, you know, can our money be used? And one of the suggestion that I, that I gave, I remember telling uh my chief deputy, is to ask finance, uh, could our insurance cover it? And um, and it wasn't. So we, we've tried to come up with different solutions and plans in order to try to get that roof in um repair.
So what I would like to see, and in addition to the capital, we have the plan, but it doesn't make sense to have a plan if you don't have a strategy. So I would like to see a strategy go along with that capital improvement plan on how we're going to fund the sheriff's capital improvement needs so that they will have, we, so that you know that there's uh, it is also our goal to make sure that the sheriff's um department is, is taken into consideration with all of the construction, everything that we're doing to improve the rest of the county. And we got to take care of the jail and the inmates. Along with that, we have a, a, a plan and a strategy for everything, the courthouse admin, the courts. So we also need to have the same thing for the jail to make sure that we are taking care of that part of our obligation also. So in addition to the, the, the plan, we need the strategy to execute.
Yes, ma'am.
I do want to remind you, Commissioner Williams and Commissioner Washington, that there was no contribution to capital, so there were no approved capital projects. So we will be looking at these this year. Um, and we have also, finance has also been in talk with the sheriff's office regarding this to make sure that we do have another um adjuster come out from the insurance company to find out if there's any parts of the roof that may be covered under insurance as well. Because there's been a lot of storms and a lot of debris and wind. So we just want to make sure that we're doing what's in the best interest for the county fiduciary-wise.
I get it. But it's gonna be worse for the county if that roof falls in, period. So, and then we, we, and, and I guess part of my, my- So, and then we, we, and, and I guess part of my, my umbrage is that we just fixed the roof for water resources. And so I don't understand why we're not trying to put the same emphasis on if, if we're saying that it's an emergency request to fix water resources roof. And we found the money to do that. And the sheriff has been asking for this roof for years. And he's saying, the, our elected sheriff sworn officer is saying that he almost had an incident. We need to make sure that we understand that that's also a priority. We need to at least get this roof fixed and then come up with a strategy to, to um, take care of the rest of his capital improvements. But we can't leave out the sheriff's department and the jail and that admin when we're doing all of these improvements for the county.
And let me just add to your, your statement, which is very good. We're, we're, we appreciate the dialogue on that. Let's, we're, even though we're focusing on that roof, let's focus on that generator as well. Because uh, we almost did not get that generator working. And when I tell you that the generator wasn't working, you have to remember, we have a medical facility in our jail. So when the, not only that the power went out and the generator was supposed to kick on, it did not kick on, which means that if we have people on any type of IV or oxygen machine or whatever, uh CPAP or whatever the case may be, they, they, they can't get it because the power's completely out. And then we have to call in a, a company to come in, they're responding um, for however long it takes them to respond, they get to call to respond while this generator is down. They can have no lights, no nothing. And we have to feed, we have to provide medications at certain times. So although that roofing is important, and as you stated, which is very good, um, that generator is too. We will save money in the long run. The last thing that we want as a county is for something to happen and we be sued. We're gonna be, and then we'll pay even more uh because we didn't get it repaired. So this concludes our budget presentation. Let me just thank uh you commissioners for uh listening to our budget um presentation. Thank you for all the hard work that you all do. I want to thank the county uh for their leadership and for their working relationship and partnership with us. But more importantly, I have to be biased. I have some of the best team members in Rockdale County, and that's my staff. So I want to thank my executive staff, my commanders, and all of my civilian staff, and all of the other staff within the Rockdale County Sheriff's Office for all their hard work and dedication that they provide for this county. So thank you all again. Please take into consideration that we want to get away from utilizing our spots for our vehicles. And, and, and if we get away from that, we wouldn't be having these type of topics, I believe, in terms of the roofing, because we can allocate that money back towards the repairs and maintenance of our buildings. If the county would take up the uh capital improvement of the, of the funding, the cars and so forth. So thank you all again for your, your work.
So I have a question about the cars. Is there a plan, like we have a lease agreement for the other vehicles in the county? Is there such a thing for the patrol cars?
There is. Well, we have had conversations about uh that, yes ma'am. We've had that. Now, is it a plan? Um, I, I, I think there's a, I, I think there's a plan. We are awaiting uh response back from the county. I think Sue was gonna jump in and say something. So we're waiting for responses back to try to determine what's the best option for us.
Okay.
Yes, and so Fleet has been working with the sheriff's office to determine what kind of cars and how many to present to you, how much funding would be needed. Because when we enter into the lease, it's a yearly commitment, like you know. So making sure that that money is there year after year and also building. So to pick a number to start at and then add a certain amount of vehicles each year so that they are on a rolling plan. So we're working on a proposal for that right now.
Okay, because we want to avoid those nineteen ninety-five.
Yes, that's the plan, yes.
Thank you. Thank you so much to the sheriff's office. We appreciate everything that you are doing. We appreciate that very thorough presentation. We're gonna take a five-minute break, and then we'll hear from uh Judge Washington for the probate court.
Birth certificates and death certificate. As a result of that, they can now do it online. They don't have to come in. But for a nominal fee, we have been generating an additional $1,500 each month so far. And it is estimated that by year's end, we will have generated an additional $18,000. And I would think that the taxpayers of Rockdale would be happy to know that that money is now going into the county coffers. Recently, we've implemented a five-part probate court speaker series in partnership with the Rockdale County Library. The title of the series was Behind the Bench. And we've had five different programs related to probate court services. Conservatorships and guardianships, wills and estates, administration of estates, and emergency mental health resources. Some of the opportunities that we're looking forward to is implementing e-file within 2024. And long-term, perhaps in the strategic plan, converting... Last year, money was spent to scan all of our records working with MCCI. As a result of it, our clerks no longer have to go to Parker Road or downstairs in the dungeon to access files. What we would like to do is, long-term, is be able to integrate it with our court operating system so that our customers can access it. We're also looking to start a pro bono clinic and also continue with our training. As I shared with you last time, I think it was in 2022, 2021, we became an Article VI probate court as a result of the population growing above 90,000. So not only do we have additional people to serve, but we have expanded jurisdictional responsibilities with the Superior Court. As far as challenges, space is always an ongoing challenge, technology limitation. And our case management system really was designed, from what I understand, in 2006. And it's really not adequate for today. But not only that, the case management system really was... The one that was selected is more beneficial to the Superior Court and the state court. And it's not really specifically adapted to the services and functions of the probate court. So we have brought on a technology specialist to help us transcend some of those difficulties. If you would, now move on to page eight. So our professional services operating budget for the year 2024 is $15,500. We expect that it will jump to $235,000, which represents a $219,000 increase. That warrants some degree of explanation. You see there, one of the professional services that we're requesting is a fiduciary compliance clerk. And I'll talk about that a little bit later. But also, a technology specialist is included in that, which should help us. One of the things I said we wanted to do is have e-file. There again, our mission is to make the probate court more accessible to our customers. Attorneys have asked about it, and so that's why... Those are some of the things in there. So as I said, it's to increase the accessibility of the probate court. And those fiduciary compliance clerks is to protect the financial and personal interests of the wards and beneficiaries of estates that we supervise. Now, as I said, $235,000 or $219,000 is a significant increase. But as I'll get to and develop later on, we anticipate that with some of the additional services we will legally obligated to provide, it will more than pay for itself, and I'll get to that. If you can move to page 11, strike that, page nine. And there you see where we cite, for example, a fiduciary compliance officer. And that's required by statute. When I say required by statute, that we oversee and monitor guardianships and conservatorships. And to bring them into compliance, part of bringing them into compliance, the statute requires notice. The post office has not been as reliable as it has in the past. And you heard the sheriff's office saying that they had a backlog of servicing. So what we have to do now is engage special process servers at a significantly higher rate. If you would, now turn to slide 11. Our current organizational chart, as it's supposed to be, has eight full-time people and one part-time person. That a person... That part-time individual is an associate judge who comes in two days a week. The deputy clerk position, deputy two position is currently vacant. What we need is cited on page 12. We're asking for a... An additional deputy clerk three, an additional deputy clerk two, and two fiduciary compliance officers to help us do the duties that we are legally obligated to perform. But because of being understaffed right now, we're simply not. And again, I will get into that in more detail later on. So if we can turn now to page 14. And on page 14, you see four personal budget requests justification. It speaks for itself, so I won't read it and go into detail. But just by way of explanation, in 2023, we had two deputy clerk threes, two deputy clerk twos, and two deputy clerk ones. When one of our deputy clerk threes left, we found it very difficult to find a qualified person to fill that position. Indeed, we had hired someone, and despite how they appeared on paper, it really did not work out sufficient for them to make it past the 90 days. So what we decided to do, we decided to do is to eliminate the deputy clerk three position and instead ask for an additional deputy clerk two position, resulting in a net saving as it relates to those two positions for the county of $5,000. We did not... That was not funded for 2024. And so what we've had to do is our chief clerk has really been doing the functions of a chief clerk and the functions of what would have been the deputy clerk three plus the regular office supervisory responsibilities. We've asked for two fiduciary compliance clerks, one dedicated to estates and the other one dedicated to guardianships and conservatorships. I know the commissioners understand what's involved, but for the benefit of the public who may be listening, if I may take a moment to explain what that is. Guardianships are individuals who are appointed by the court to oversee or manage the well-being of a person. Could be an adult, an incapacitated adult, or a minor who cannot, for various reasons, care for themselves. The duration of that is indefinite, could be a lifetime, and oftentimes is. They are required to file periodic reports so that the court can monitor the well-being of the ward. A conservator is an individual, and you heard about this in, I think with Britney Spears and also recently with Wendy Williams, is someone who is appointed to oversee the finances and the property. Again, that could last for a lifetime. They are required to file periodic inventory and asset management plans. And the court is required to monitor that so that their property or their health is not wasted. And if they're not in compliance, to bring them into compliance or to report them. So that's... But we have not... It has not been done for a long time because we were simply understaffed. And so that would be the role of the two fiduciary compliance clerks. As I said, we moved from a non-Article VI court to an Article VI courts. Our responsibilities, our jurisdiction, our clientele have expanded. There are corresponding additional administrative responsibilities. And we've asked also to change the associate judge position to a full-time position. I'm on page 15, and I do want to make a correction. On page 15, we listed the reclassification as $171. Strike that, $171,484. That is a clerical error. It should be $130,000 as opposed to 171. Okay, moving on to, I believe...
I have a question.
Sure.
That... There are other judges, the state court judges and the magistrate court judges. How is that in... And the juvenile court judge, especially the magistrate court judge who is the... An elected official. How is this in line with their pay?
I believe that, and I talked with H. Talent Management in trying to come up with a figure, and we believe, and they can correct me on this, that it's supposed to be comparable for the market rate.
So wait a minute.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear. No, it... This, not this number, the $130,000 number.
So I'm asking...
So this number is incorrect.
I meant, so you're saying the 171 includes the benefits?
Yes, I'm saying that there are no judges right now, so we ask...
Executive Director Holmes, can you go to the microphone? Thank you. I can't hear you.
And by the way, the 130 includes... Is inclusive of benefits?
No, does not.
No, I'm sorry, Judge. I was just asking where the 171,000 number came from, if that number was inclusive of benefits. That's what... It would have to be inclusive of benefits, is what I'm saying. There are no judges from a base perspective that have that salary as a base.
But the 130, what I want to know is how much... What I want, what I would recommend that we not do is have an associate judge. First of all, the magistrate court doesn't have an associate full-time. Juvenile doesn't have an associate full-time. Now we're asking for a full-time probate judge that's making as much, if not more, than the elected and appointed chief judges. So I'm concerned about that off the top. But I want to know, well, even if it is 130, what that is in comparison to what the chief magistrate, the juvenile court, and the state court judge makes?
So Commissioner, I can provide those numbers for you. You asking about state court, say that again, juvenile court magistrate?
The rest of the judges.
The rest of the judges as it compares to the 130?
Yes.
Okay, give me like five minutes and I'll get that back to you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Shall I move on?
Yes, please.
Okay, if you will, please, I think, turn to page 16. Okay. I want to take a few minutes to talk about a actual case that will underscore, and I believe, support why we need these positions. There had been established in the probate court a conservatorship for an incapacitated adult. And there's a letter I'm referring to, and it's up on the screen, for an incapacitated adult. That incapacitated adult who was in a conservatorship died, I think, in 2021 or 2022, I'm not for certain. An executor from another county was appointed, strike that administrator, from another county was appointed to oversee the administration of his estate. In the process of exercising his due diligence, he discovered that this conservatorship had been established, I think, in 2006, three prior judicial administrations. During the course of the conservatorship, no reports had been filed, no monitoring had been done, none of that stuff. The administrator researched bank records and learned that this individual came into a large sum of money around about 2016 as a result of a settlement. That was never reported, and it does not exist today. As a result of that, a lawsuit was filed against the conservator. But because the conservator didn't have that money anymore, they also sought to attach the bond of the Rockdale County Probate Court. That naturally created a conflict of interest. Outside counsel had to be retained to represent the probate court, and the case was transferred to another county. As a result of that case, that prompted the team at the Rockdale County Probate Court to do a self-audit. And I should mention that since I've come in, I think it was 2021, '22, we've been doing our best to remain current. But we did a self-audit going back about 10 years. We simply did not... We wanted to go back more because in this particular case, the guard... The conservatorship was established in 2007 or '06. Just going back 10 years, we discovered that there were 1,141 cases that were not in compliance, going back, as I said, several judicial administrations. This is... I don't have the words for it. Because as a court, we are entrusted to watching out for those who are vulnerable and making sure that their guardians, conservators are doing right by them. By way of analogy, if I may, it is analogous to the early DFAX cases of the late '90s, of which I'm personally familiar because I represented one of the earliest DFAX cases where a young five-year-old child died in the custody of another person while under DFAX custody. This is similar to that because we stand in the place we have a, not only a moral obligation, but we are legally required, hence the suit. We are legally required, and it was shocking to find out that not... That had not happened. So not only is there a moral requirement and a legal requirement, and that's addressed in the first letter, call-to-action letter. I also sent a second supplemental letter, if you can fast-forward to that, where I went beyond the moral and legal obligation and discussed the financial impact. The fin... If these folks had been properly filing their reports and inventories, the county would have recouped over $300,000 a year, just for one year. If we went back those 10 years, forget about the 20 or 30 years, it amounts to over $3 million in uncollected fees. So while the investment in hiring in two fiduciary clerks would be $118,000, you would more than recoup that each year. I heard another attorney this morning say, "Well, I think it would be in the county's best interest to move on that." I want to borrow on that because, in fact, there is a financial incentive, aside from the potential lawsuit. Effective January 1 of 2025, there will be some fee changes as a result of SB 232. As a result of those fee changes, the fees that the county would be due is significantly reduced. So if we act now, and I have filed a mid-year budget request, which I understand is pending, okay? Potentially, there is over $3 million if you go back 10 years. By waiting until January to do this, that reduces to slightly over $1 million, which is nothing to ignore and worth the two additional fiduciary clerks. So if you can now turn to page 21. We're asking for a client solutions consultant in this budget so that we can implement e-file, online case filings. And this is the, I guess, capital improvement, yeah, capital improvement, $25,000 to integrate our scanned records. As I mentioned before, our records, we were successful in scanning them so that our staff would no longer have to go to Parker Road down in the dungeon. Now, when a customer comes to us to access those records, the courthouse personnel can produce them. The next step, long-term step, is hiring a technology consultant to integrate that, which is an MCI, with the courthouse current case management system. As a result of doing that, that's one less task that a already understaffed probate court would have to do. The public would be able to access that themselves. On page, I think it's 23, we're asking for $25,000 because there would be... Have to be some changes to the physical structure to... I'm sorry? To accommodate the additional staff. And if you look at page 25, you see the capital improvement plan for 2025, 2026, and for a five-year total. Members of the commissions that... That board of commission. That concludes my presentation. I'd like to entertain any questions that you may have at this time.
Commissioner Washington, do you have any questions or comments?
The $25,000 for the... Gosh, it feels like, since we are in the middle of building a courthouse, that $25,000 is a... Is a... I don't want to say a... It doesn't seem appropriate to just... I don't think we can... How do you justify $25,000 when we're getting ready to move you into a brand spanking new building?
Couple of ways. We have been... I heard someone else use the, I think it was the sheriff earlier today, describe someone in his office as being cheap. We have been tried to be very financially conservative. I talked about how we've implemented a program where we're generating an additional $15,000 each month. Also about, I think it was last year, we canceled a portion of a contract because it was no longer necessary. That resulted in a net savings of $75,000. So to answer your question, we've been doing two things. Wherever we can save, we've been trying to. And wherever we can generate revenue and continue to serve the public at a high level, we've been doing that. And we think in the long-term, $25,000.
Well, you also heard that the sheriff needs almost a million dollars for a roof. So if I had to choose between expanding, using that $25,000 for, in a place that you're not going to need in a couple of years or fixing his roof, I would, you know, take it toward... it towards the roof, but.
The support, his supporting argument was that the roof almost fell on an individual. By way of analogy, I have cited at least one case where it was not properly supervised, did result in a lawsuit, and that there at least one.
I'm talking about the $25,000. Is there any way that we can utilize some space without spending the $25,000? Or is there any way that anybody can go remote, so, I don't know, so that we can get the people without using that $25,000?
We're looking at all that, including, I think they called it hoteling, you know, where you share workspace.
Share workspace.
So we're looking at that, and that would be something that we would be open, if you all were inclined to address that, we would try to modify downward.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
I want to thank you for your attention and your questions. I think it was helpful to the public. I do want to give a shout-out to the probate court team. I know the sheriff said that they had the best, the sheriff said that they had the best team.
That's fire. That's fire. Oh, you're sorry, then.
The sheriff said that they had the best team in the county, and he's absolutely right, but we also have the best team, and so I want to give a shout-out to them for doing the extraordinary job, particularly during the COVID.
I wanted to come back up and just provide some additional insight into the numbers. The number and the recommendation that we had provided for the Associate Probate Court Judge, in line with ACCG guidelines for a full-time Associate Probate Judge, $92,472.69. So the 130 would be with benefits. The 171,000, we do not have a judge at that salary right now, with the exception of our Superior Court judges, who also get paid by the state, so. If you would like me to, I can go through all of their salaries, but I did go and look at them, so none of them are at the 171,000.
Are any of them near 92?
They're all up over 92,000, the full-time judges, yes, ma'am?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I think that that's where we got the total 130 figure from.
Yes.
Which is inclusive of base salary plus benefits.
Plus benefits, that is correct.
Okay. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Do we need a break? We're scheduled for a break, but we took one earlier.
So we're running slightly behind, and we have the public defender who's here and the, and the fire rescue, so we could get back on track?
Just keep moving. Okay, that's what, that would be my suggestion. So let's hear now from Rockdale Fire and Rescue.
I feel like you're on the presses, right?
Good afternoon, Madam Commissioners. I apologize, my bubbly suck today, I'm fighting a headache here, but we're gonna, we're gonna keep it moving. I want to start out by saying, there, in the words of the chairman, there are two types of people in Rockdale County, is those that wish they were the best, and those that are, and upset.
Which one is the fire department? The best?
The best.
Okay. I'm just asking.
Model of Rockdale County Fire Rescue is excellence beyond our standards, service beyond your expectations. That encapsulates the vision and mission of Rockdale County Fire Rescue, as well as its core values of respect, openness, compassion, knowledge, diversity, accountability, leadership, and equality. And with that, I will move forward with the presentation of the Rockdale County Fire Rescue FY '25 budget. Next slide, please. So we talk about our successes. The ones I would like to speak out, first of all, is that Station 10 is open and operational as of August 19th. There were some setbacks with it, but nevertheless, it's up and running and serving the community well. And just wanted to point out, that's SPLOSS-funded, that was a SPLOSS-funded event. Our training facility, which is also SPLOSS-funded, it will be done in phases. We're hoping that Phase 1 will kick off the latter part of this year. The bid process is already going through the process and things such as that, so it's moving right along. But I want to spend a little bit more time here and talk about the importance of having a training center. As you all know, we recently received our report for our ISO rating. Prior to 2018, Rockdale County, Rockdale County and Rockdale County Fire Rescue was a 4.4. In 2018, they achieved 3.3. Well, just a month ago, we received our report, and Rockdale County Fire Rescue is a 2.2, with 1 being the best. We are moving forward, and that goes to support for you all, as well as the county and the citizens of Rockdale County Fire, Rockdale County. If we want to move further along, we need a training facility. Yes, we use surrounding facilities, such as Clayton County, Atlanta, Social Circle, but those are not free, it's at a cost. But when we talk about our ISO rating and living up to our model, our vision and our mission, we have to be able to train daily. Training does not stop with recruits. Although we do not have a recruit class, we're constantly training every day. A firefighter has to submit 234 hours annually. That's 24 minimum, with the state, 212 for ISO. And although Rockdale County is not heavy with sky, high rises, we still have to train. There are inherent skills that, for every firefighter. So doing that training, we have to have a training facility, a state-of-the-art training facility, and it also opens up Rockdale County Fire Rescue and Rockdale County opportunity to bring other jurisdictions to us. Talk about our transport units, they went into service August 1st. Since going into service August 1st, Priority 1 calls, 27 transports, 27 transports, that's huge. That's 27 patients that life would have, they'd just been hanging in the balance, waiting for ambulance to come. But due to the transport units of Rockdale County Fire Rescue, 27 transports to date. Now, that's not talking about all the other calls they responded on, but it does highlight 27 transports.
Since when did you say?
August 1st, April 1st.
April 1st.
April 1st. Leadership training, to live up to that model and mission and vision, we have to train. One thing I want to point out is most often in public safety, when it comes to training, typically it's all about the sworn personnel. Here at Rockdale County Fire Rescue, our civilian personnel have the same opportunities for advancement, succession planning, planning and leadership training, through our Leadership is Ownership Series. It teaches accountability, effective communication, and once again, succession planning. EMT certification, Rockdale County Fire Rescue is allowed at 156 positions for field operations, that are firefighters, our officers. Currently, we have 127 personnel on staff. Out of that 127, all 125 are certified EMTs or paramedics. We even have a couple of nurses. That's huge when we talk about service delivery. Fire or rescue, yeah, we're fighting fires, but we're running more EMS calls. So where we need those firefighters, we need EMTs as well. So that's huge. Added with that is that we had 28 recruits that started yesterday. We have 13 recruits that are currently going through the fire portion. All 13 of those recruits are certified EMTs. So once they complete their fire training, they will enhance that 127. And once again, as we navigate with the 28 or so that we hired yesterday, that will also bring those numbers up to us having a full staff. Opportunities, opportunities, we, hopefully, the end of the year, January, December and January, we're looking to receive three new pieces of equipment. That is a quint, two quints, which we talked about, a quint is a combination, it has water as well as tools, versus a pomper, which only has water. We're looking to have one quint delivered maybe December, and then the other two pieces of equipment to come, the first part or the first quarter of 2025. So that's a great opportunity for us to enhance our fleet, as well as trade out some of our older vehicles, which I refer to in the CIP. Another opportunity for FY '25 to think about is our fire prevention fees. Fire prevention, thus, year-to-date, has administered 447 fire prevention services. If we were collecting fees for those services, we would have collected $69,950. 447 services, that's plan reviews, building inspections, fire alarm system inspections, that we are doing, and once again, we're behind the eight ball. Every other, most other jurisdictions are already charging service fees.
So, can I ask, can I?
Go ahead.
How do we put that on a fast track to get that started, so that we can maybe have that in the budget as a, as revenue?
So, once again, it's an opportunity, so setting up meetings with CFO, Chief of Staff, and passing it through them, county attorney, getting their blessings, and then they would present it to you, but this is a stage that we're looking at, it's an opportunity.
Well, I would like to.
It's an opportunity.
Work on that, CFO.
All challenges. As I said, we have 127 field operations currently. We have 13 recruits that are in the second phase of fire training, and we have 28 new recruits that started yesterday. Staffing and retention is a challenge. It's not all about money, however, we have lost several personnel to other jurisdictions that are paying more. Sometimes it's about career change or family. Nonetheless, it still is an issue for Rockdale County Fire Rescue as relates to staffing. Mixed with that is, well, I won't say, from 2021, when I first took office as Fire Chief, we've lost 118 personnel for various reasons, retirement, resignation for other organizations, or various reasons, family matters, but it's 118. So we're constantly filling those positions. Right now, in a perfect world, we have 127 currently, we have 13 that are in the second half, we hired another 28 yesterday. If all goes well, then we will have our full operational staff, which will allow us to have four persons per piece of equipment. Every piece of equipment will have four persons, which is optimum. So we're pushing toward it, but it's still a challenge. And with a little bit is lack of experience, the average firefighter, Rockdale County Fire Rescue is 40 and younger. So these are your firefighters, your fire personnel are going to be here with you for the next 15, 20 years. So that goes back to talking about that success of that leadership training, and making sure that they get not just physical training, mental, emotional, physical, as well as educational training, so they can continue to provide first-in-class service to Rockdale County. Next slide, please. Our goals and initiatives. We talk about quality fire station, open houses. So we had Station 10, we had a soft opening there, but wanting to get out into the communities and have open houses throughout the communities, maybe quarterly. Invite the community out, so they actually have an opportunity to come meet the firefighters that are serving them in their community. Have any questions, everybody likes to get on the fire engine, squirt a little water, so looking to do that. And we're now public information, education, and relations is part of that. Educating the public, not just on smoke alarms, but just what the life of a firefighter, what it takes to become a firefighter, to sustain firefighters, and what we do outside of fighting fire, outside of providing emergency calls. What else does the fire service do for you and your community? Our equity is our smoke alarm program, so out in communities, knocking on doors, passing out flyers, looking for those persons that may not have a smoke detector, or replacing that smoke detector, or may simply need batteries. But one thing we definitely do, anytime there is a fire, we're back out in that community canvassing, knocking door to door, because most often, what we found is that, that fire that home did not have a working smoke alarm. So if that home did not have a working smoke alarm, I'm sure there are others. So getting on into the community and making sure that every home has a working smoke alarm. Child Safety Seat, Child Safety Seat has been around probably 26 so years when I first became a firefighter. It's a government-run initiative, and we have folks stopping by the stations just about daily, wanting assistance with installing their child safety seat. Most people think you just put the seat in there, put the seatbelt through and clamp, and it's ready to rock and roll. It is not. We've all, as well as my colleagues, have responded on calls where the car seat and the seatbelt attached was out the car, because it was not installed properly. There's a cost with that training, but once we get the training, they also supply car safety seats. So for those persons, parents that are kind of home with their baby, they don't have the funds to purchase a car safety seat, we'll be able to do that. So as we move ahead, looking to get that program up and running. Home safety survey goes along with the smoke alarm program. My fire safety educators are out in communities daily, inspecting homes, once again, looking, walking through, doing a walkthrough with you, identifying any issues or safety concerns, and providing you with the resources where to have those concerns addressed. I wanted to sit up and talk about the deaf and hearing program. When we talk about equity, you know, pencil and paper works well, but when you're on an emergency on the highway, I-20, and you encounter a victim that is deaf, being able to communicate, because you want to provide the best care for them as possible, the only way to do that is to be able to communicate effectively with them. So we're looking at, in FY '25, to have all of our fire personnel take a basic class for sign language, to get those basic skills. So that is a huge thing for us when we talk about equity in the community. Innovations, we talk about biotelemetry. The new thing in firefighting is biotelemetry, where that device is actually connected to the firefighter. And while that firefighter is in fighting fire or doing whatever type of activities, it's constantly monitoring all of the vital signs, of activity level, and alerts the outside command staff if that firefighter needs to come out. That is huge, because outside of, people think that fire is the number-one killer of firefighters, it is not. The number-one killer is really a close tie with suicide, as well as heart attacks or stroke. That biotelemetry will allow us to assess our firefighters during those hazardous incidents and get the help that they need to hopefully save a life. Next slide, please. So our operating budget. Our operating budget, as you see, increased, and I'll talk about that on the next slide, if I may. Really, let's go to the next one. So we talk about the operating budget. You see, on the first slide, it was, it's gone up $384,685 is what we're proposing for FY '25. That $384,685 is $227,564 for SCBA's, self-contained breathing apparatus. Those are the air packs that firefighters wear on their back. Right now, we have Engine 2, Engine 4, and Engine 8 are operating off 213 model, whereas all the other models are 2018. The big thing with that is that, when it comes to parts and repairs, that cost, because we have two different pieces of equipment we're trying to repair. So wanting to get all of the equipment uniform across, and that would be the cost associated with that. Medical equipment, once again, we have the transport units, but even without the transport units, our fire apparatus respond to emergency calls every day. That is who's responding to the calls, it's not the medical transport units, it's the engines. And there's a cost associated with supplies, band-aids, gauze, AED pads, oxygen masks, oxygen tanks. There's a price, and prices are going up, medical supplies are going up, and this is a cost that we are seeing steadily rising. And finally, for our training supplies, we have new recruits coming in, we have continuing education for our firefighters, training manuals and things such as that, so that small $15,000 is going toward enhanced our training supplies, so that we can make sure that everyone has the utensils and educational tools that they need to continue to strive. Next slide, please. It's probably one of the slides I'm most excited about somewhat, is that our current organization chart is. is the same as our proposed organization chart. Our current org chart and our proposed org chart is the same. Did y'all hear me? Our current org chart and our proposed org chart is the same. Why? It's because thanks to talent management, thanks to CFO, thanks to Chief Sanders, thanks to you all, that we have grown Rockdale County Fire Rescue into the organization it needs to be. For a very long time, when I came, seven years ago, Rockdale County Fire Rescue operated off, out of two divisions of labor, operations and administration, you just tossed. Now, we have five clear divisions, because our services have grown, we're able to track those numbers. You know why? Because that is what helped us get that two-two. We were able to put our hands on data by having five clear divisions of labor. So, once again, thanks to CFO, talent management, you all, Chief Sanders, we are able to build our chart, our organization's structure, the way it needs to be, to be in line with other municipalities surrounding us and throughout the nation. So, once again, there will be no personnel request for Rockdale County Fire Rescue. But part of that I do want to point out is, Shannon, I apologize, can we go back three slides to the operating, to the first one? That one right there, okay. So, you will see an increase in the proposed budget for total personnel services and benefits, because that's already added, and we've been operating that way. So, it's not new, it's just showing that the difference is what has already been accounted for. Is that the right way to say that, CFO?
Yes.
Yeah, so it's already been accounted for, but just wanted to be transparent and show what the difference in those numbers are. That takes us to our five-year CIP. So, under the automotive equipment, that, what I want to highlight off the CIP for time, but I want to highlight what's most important. All of them are, but what's most important is the technology programs and improvement, construction and heavy equipment, and buildings, improvement, renovations, and inspections. So, with technology programs and improvement, we're looking for forty-five thousand dollars for thermal imaging cameras. Thermal imaging cameras are cameras used as a firefighter tactic. When our firefighter's on the scene, and there's a house fire, that camera is able to, they can scan it from outside, and definitely inside, it helps locate the scene of the fire, and more importantly, it helps locate victims, so they can be rescued quickly. That is importance of the thermal imaging cameras. Seventy thousand dollars for tablets for N T classes, fire prevention, suppression, and mounting equipment. Most training is either virtual, online, or some facsimile of that, definitely the testing. Having a computer system set up at the training facility with these tablets, and most of them are with iOS. So, that's iPads and things such as that. But having tablets that are available for our recruits, for our fire personnel, for continuing education, is a huge as it relates to training. Portable radios, once again, we have to communicate. Being able to hear the calls, respond back to the calls, talk amongst ourselves, is the importance of those portable radios. Construction and heavy equipment. Sorry, I have my little notes, y'all bear with me, bear with me, heavy equipment. All right, so heavy equipment, we're going to talk about, we have a ladder truck that is, a ladder nine, it's twenty-three years old. But let me take you back to the National Fire Protection Association, developed fire standards, which are wildly accepted nationwide. NFPA nineteen-eleven states that fifteen years for a frontline piece of equipment, five years as reserve, and retire at twenty years. Now, of course, in our personalized, our personal vehicles, we may have a vehicle that's twenty years old, but the maintenance has been great on it, it still works well, then more likely, just because it's twenty years old, we're not looking to get rid of it. But the vehicles that I'm highlighting today are vehicles that, this ladder truck, once again, is twenty-three years old. It has ninety-four thousand miles on it, and it's, but it's, it's steady in repairs, it's operational right now, but this year alone, it has been in and out of service. We have our hazmat truck, our hazmat truck is response to hazmat. When there's a spill, we have BioLab, we have other chemical companies in Rockdale County. The hazmat truck is geared with the utensils and, and equipment necessary to mitigate that hazmat spill, as long as outfits as well. That truck is twenty years old, and once again, the wear and tear on it. And let me highlight this, I think about two, three years ago, when BioLab had the, the big incident again, one of our engines, Engine Seven, is still suffering today from the chemicals, from the chemicals from that BioLab incident. So, we inherited that, so it's not just about wear and tear, even responding. Heat, chemicals has a wear and tear on our apparatus. We have a twenty-three-year-old engine, we have a thirty-two-year-old engine, which is reserved, so looking to replace all those. Now, the good thing, I want to go back to that opportunity, we have three vehicles coming in the latter part of the year, the first part of the year, but we still have more that needs to be, so that'd be great, that we can offset some of these units with those. But once again, when we talk about frontline, when we talk about the standard, fifteen years frontline, five years reserve, twenty years to retire, we have other vehicles, eighteen, nineteen years old. So, as we continue along, those vehicles' life cycle is coming to an end, or definitely should be looked at more closely. So, we're going to talk about new buildings, which I want to highlight, well, our new buildings are SPOS-funded. Earlier this year, we submitted a list for this new SPOS of our recommendations, along with Director Hammer, we collaborated on that. So, looking at fire location, Fire Station Eight relocation. Fire Station Eight, we inherited Rockdale County when the merger came, but, and serving well, but looking at the growth of the county, looking at relocating that to a more central spot. Some people say, well, centrally, yeah, but when we look at our mapping, the remapping and rezoning of the areas, we need to look at relocating Station Eight, we've included that as part of SPOS. As well as Fire Station Four, which was built in nineteen-seventy-five, it is the oldest fire station in Rockdale County, and it's all metal, has a metal roof, something straight out of Wizard of Oz, right? So, we need to really look at rebuilding that fire station. Once again, we talk about SPOS funds that these renovations are contributed to. And I believe that's it. Any questions? Anything I need to cover, honey? Y'all sure? All right. And I apologize, and I'm not my best today, but we got through it. Any questions?
We appreciate your being here, and where is that fire station that is all metal? Where is that one?
Union Church, on the latter southern end of the county.
Okay, all right.
You want to ride by? We'll take you by.
I've been there.
Okay, yeah.
Um, do we have any, are we planning to move that building, or just?
As of right now, it's looking to renovate in the location it is. We are looking to relocate Station Eight.
Right.
If we can find a prop. We have not.
Identified for that, yeah?
Yeah, just, once again, working with Director Hammer and his staff, and just trying to identify, but.
Is Station Eight, is that relocation scheduled for the, this new SPOS?
Once funded, for the new SPOS, absolutely, so as funding come in, and they say we're ready, rock and roll, we'll be ready to go.
Okay, all right. Once again, you know, I'm, one thing about the fire and rescue, we see the results of all of the hard work, the branding, the ISO improvements, it's something that we can quantify. So, I've said it a hundred times, congratulations on the improvements of the ISO. One thing that the residents, the citizens should be able to see is that helps your, your insurance rating. As, as our ISO rating goes down, then your insurance rating should go down, because now we've proven that we're a safer community.
So, so if I may, we've actually received several calls, but the other day, we received a questionnaire from insurance company, and we were really excited, because we're like, okay, we've been saying this, people hear me say it, people have challenged me on it, and things such as that. So, the insurance, we reached out to her, put on speakerphone and asked questions, and one of the things I want to know, what savings? And I believe if I, they were paying about six thousand or so for our insurance, it was dropping down to two, because of that ISO rating. So, that's huge, that is huge. So, and once again, we've received other calls, but that was the first time we were asked to complete a form, which we did with pleasure, and, and the person was very informative, answering our questions, because we want to know how effective it is, so it does work, it does matter, and that's why we are continuing to move forward.
So, did the homeowner connect you?
No, it's insurance, it was insurance, yeah.
The insurance company just contacted you on their own?
Yeah, and that's normal, it happens, when you're purchasing a home, and they ask you about how far are you from a fire hydrant? How far, what's the closest station? All those things, prior to when these people first purchased their home, they were well outside of the five miles from a fire station, over a thousand feet from a fire hydrant, those type of things. So, now, with the improvements that we've made, enhancing our service capabilities, now citizens are able to feel it, receive it, in a positive manner.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I don't have any other questions.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate so much what fire and rescue does, and of course, I love my Station Eight.
Absolutely, so with that, I would like to close out by saying excellence beyond our standards, service beyond your expectations. Y'all have a great afternoon.
Thank you. Okay, we are right back on track, on time, and we are ready for our Public Defender's Office with Attorney Gina Bernard.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Washington and Commissioner Williams.
Good afternoon.
I started as your Rockdale Circuit Public Defender back in December eighteenth of two thousand and twenty-three. And, but before I get into my budget.
Can I get you to move up just a little bit to the microphone?
Is that good?
That's better, yes, thank you.
You're welcome. Before I get into my budget, I have an ask of the board. And my ask is this, I am asking the board to change the name of the office from the Rockdale County Public Defender's Office to the Law Office of the Rockdale Circuit Public Defender, and here's why. There is a narrative out there about public defenders, that we're not real lawyers, we're public pretenders. And when individuals hire a private attorney, they go to the Law Office of X Y Z Attorney at Law. And I want the indigent citizens of Rockdale County, who get embroiled in the criminal justice system, to know that when they're coming to the public, their off, when their attorney is a public defender, they're coming to a law office. And I think that will help change the narrative, in addition to the different things that we are doing currently.
What do we have to do to get that done?
I'm not sure, does the state allow a name change of the Public Defender's Office?
I believe it has to be done by changing the ordinance.
Good evening, or afternoon still. We did meet with the county attorney, and we did ask that Public Defender Bernard submit that in an official request, so she has submitted that via email, so we will be coming back to the board with that request from an official perspective. So, the name that she gave you was the exact same name that she has already submitted. So, we'll come back to the Board of Commissioners with the county attorney.
So, it's just a local?
Yes, when he, she actually met with us, and she talked to County Attorney Beg, and he told her that she had to submit it officially via email, so she did that, and then we would bring it to you. So, I don't want to speak about the exact process, but that was what it was.
Is he, um, looking at the legality? Because the other side of that is that we also, the prosecutor's office can't, you know, they're practicing law also, and they're defending the county, so we can't change their name. So, I just want to make sure that if we do something like that, that we look at both sides and we're balanced.
Absolutely, Madam Commissioner, so we'll definitely look at it, and then I'll follow back up with you guys once I speak with the county attorney, but we do have the official request from the Public Defender. Thank you.
Thank you. And, and I will add, Commissioner Washington, that DeKalb County DA's office and DeKalb County Public Defender's Office, the Public Defender's Office is actually the Law Office of, correct?
As long as it can be done, I'm.
Thank you. Okay, so, when I started in December, I met with you all, I came here one evening, and I said that my goal is, back then, and still is, to make this office the model for other medium-sized public defender offices in the state of Georgia. I am rebuilding this office with an eye to have a team of qualified, experienced, and talented attorneys, paralegals, investigators, and administrative staff, who are client-focused and results-oriented. We strive to ensure that the Rockdale County indigent citizens, who find themselves embroiled in the criminal justice system, receive effective, zealous, timely, and client-focused representation from arrest through trial and appeal. Next slide, please. Now, there have been challenges, and some of those challenges involve the ongoing statewide shortage of qualified attorneys, which makes recruitment more challenging and time-consuming. There are opportunities, though, that we've also found, and those opportunities have to deal with active outreach at law schools within and outside of Georgia, as well as the UGA Law School's internship and fellowship programs. Because of that outreach, we've been able to recruit attorneys from Florida, New Jersey, and the University of Georgia, and they're actually here today with us. I also was able to hire a senior attorney from another Public Defender's Office, and he is assigned, he's here today, and he is assigned to a Superior Court judge. Next slide, please. Fully staffed and adequately resourced, the Law Office of the Rockdale Circuit Public Defender will provide, will be able to provide zealous, effective, timely, and responsive legal representation to all those in our care. Our office is also a, a service to the community, and we are always open Monday through Friday from eight to five. We try not to keep that door locked at any time, because many clients don't make appointments, they come when they can. So, somebody needs to be there to greet them and welcome them. We also plan to have an active presence in Rockdale County. Next slide. When we look at the operating budget, I reviewed the budgets from prior years, and I was able to make a net change on the operating expenses of a little over twelve thousand dollars. And what I did was, I can't remember what the exact expense was, but I looked back at a couple of years to see where there was money, and then if it was ever used, and it wasn't, so then I just decreased it for that purpose. But the overall total budget impact is a little over forty-seven thousand dollars. Currently, our, my organizational chart, I have a chief assistant, a senior attorney, three new attorneys, an admin, and an investigator. Where I am proposing that we go, and where I'm recruiting to go, is to add two deputy chief assistants. One will be in, both will be in Superior Court, they will also be supervising the junior attorneys. A chief criminal investigator, three senior attorneys, two in Superior Court and one in juvenile court, four APD twos, so we have two attorneys in State Court A, and two attorneys in State Court B. A paralegal, a paralegal would be very helpful to assist the attorneys in getting the discovery out in a timely manner, and also in assisting with us filing motions, and making us look like a real law firm, because that's what we are. And then we have a senior criminal investigator and an admin. My request is for two additional positions. And that would be the next slide, please. Next slide. Yes, thank you. The personal budget request is for a social, social worker to actually be in our office. And that way, that social worker can help identify clients who have mental health, behavioral health issues, addictions, who have housing issues. We can identify them early, as soon as they come into the jail. And then that social worker will work with the attorney who's assigned to the accountability courts, as well as with Brenda Ernest and her group, and other stakeholders within the community, as well as the state of Georgia itself, because there are different services that we want to give access to our clients to, to help reduce recidivism. And it also reduces the cost to the county in having to house inmates.
Why isn't that being done with all of the work that we're doing, with the Sheriff's Office stepping up on the peer reviews? It seems like we have a lot of social services already being done, and most of those would also qual, usually, they would qualify for the Public Defender.
Correct.
Why would we do add another fifteen, five plus for services, it seems like?
I can tell you why.
Okay.
Because the people we have now are stretched thin. Brenda Ernest handles almost all of that social work, for the courts, for the judges, for the Public Defender's Office, and for the DA's office. She finally does have an assistant that was just hired in the last week or two, but I can see that as a real benefit in servicing our, the clients that come into your office.
Thank you. And yes, it is. And again, it's to, to make that contact right at the very beginning when these people are coming into the system. The other position that I'm asking for is a receptionist. When you go into a law office, there's a receptionist to greet you at, when you walk into the office. Currently, there's no one in that front window office. We do not have a face when people walk in. They have to ring a bell, so that somebody knows that there's somebody there. That's not a good look. And so I'm asking for a receptionist who will be the face and the voice of our office, who can, when people walk in, they say, welcome, how can we help you? Welcome to the Law Office of the Rockdale Circuit Public Defender's Office. How can we be of help? And it will also, because what we do right now is, everybody's kind of helping out, but we all have our own things that we have to do, our own responsibilities. So it's just an added thing, that we have to stop what we're doing to go handle the front desk. I think that one last. The other thing that I'm asking for, if you look at the five-year plan.
The capital improvement plan?
Yes. You'll see twenty thousand dollars on the technology programs and improvements. That's for a program called Justice Text. And what Justice Text does is they have a, it's a program that allows us to put out digital discovery. We get a lot of digital discovery, a lot of body cams, videos from people's statements, and, and jail calls. And that can be hours and hours and hours of having to listen to jail calls that are not of any relevance whatsoever, until you find the needle in the haystack. Well, this program, you put that, uh, digital discovery into the program, and you put the words that you are looking for. Like if it is a jail call, and you're trying to find the word for like cocaine, somebody's making an admission about cocaine, it's a drug case. We don't have to listen to hours and hours of jail calls. We put it into the system, and it will go through all of that digital discovery and give you a transcript of where you can find that word in the system. And so you can go directly there, and it just makes us more efficient. So those are, that's the request that I have. And I am open to questions, if anybody has them.
Would you be amenable to sharing that technology with your conflict counsel? Because they would need that also. The, the.
Justice Text?
Justice Text, that sounds great.
Thank you.
So thank you so much. We appreciate the work that the Public Defender's Office is doing.
Thank you.
Representing our, the clients that we know are some of the most vulnerable in our county. And thank you for your presentation today.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, we are down to board comment.
First, um, thank you for, I know the Sheriff's Office is gone, fire is gone, but it takes, and CFO, Arizona, and your staff, it takes a lot to put this together. And I'm so glad that Technology Services and the PR Department is streaming this now, because the people asked for it. But it, I love to see it when the, the citizens come in. I see the National Council of Negro Women are here, representing that organization. And it's so good to see you all a part of the budget process. A lot of times, people think that we make arbitrary decisions about what is funded or anything, but this is one of the hardest parts about this job, because everybody needs something, and there's a limited amount of money, and we have to figure out how to spread it around. So that's what we'll be doing over the next few months. But we, it's so good to see you all here, so good to see you all involved. I hope you come back tomorrow, so that you can see the rest of it. Because it, they, those are hard decisions that we have to make about who gets what, and why the other people don't. And you all missed the sheriff berating us, because we hadn't funded his, his roof in however many years. So, um, um, yeah, we, we got it from the sheriff today. But, like I said, it's hard decisions. So thank you all for being here, and we'll be back here tomorrow to listen to some more. I don't know if you all saw the fire presentation, but that's, I, I will say that watching fire grow is, is, is like watching a plan where we figured it out, how to take money and, and do the, the things that she wanted. It's like she came to us with a plan, and we figured out how to, to fund it, and we can see the tangible results of your ISO going down to a two-point-two, which is amazing. So thank you all for coming, thank you all for tuning in, those of you all that are tuning in. And we'll be back here tomorrow.
So again, thank you so much for all of you for coming. This is always an interesting process at this time of year, is to hear the needs of each of the departments and what requests they have. We don't hear from the departments that aren't requesting anything in excess of what they are already funded for, for this year, twenty-four. We only hear the ones that are requesting additional funding for personnel, for capital, for whatever it is. It's really hard, in my mind, to sit and think, because to me, it's like, oh, yes, I want to give you that.
Right.
I want to give you that. I want you to have that. I think that's the best. Knowing that we just have, you know, a finite amount of funding. And so it becomes a really difficult process to try to figure out, how do we at least meet the needs of, of some of the needs of everybody? And, and put priorities where they need to be. That's, that, I would say that is probably one of the most difficult parts of this job, is telling people, no, we can't do that this year, we have to wait a year. But when you come, and I mentioned this, this earlier today, when you come with a plan, even if we can't fund everything this year, we know what you need for, for next year. And, and it will raise up the list of priorities. I can remember, for instance, a new stove at the senior center. I bet they asked for it two, three years before we actually were able to fund it. But we knew, it was on our radar, because they had been asking for it. And so we appreciate that. We appreciate the work that every department has done in preparing these presentations. And I really like the uniform presentation style that makes all of it similar, so that we follow the similar process for each one. So thank you so much. We will meet again, starting at wa, at ten tomorrow morning. And this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.